My joy to be here today, the United States of America and in every public which stands, one nation, one under God, indivisible, with a liberty to judge and to rule.
Our next meeting is Friday, January 23rd, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, that is also the date of the landowners' meeting. And now we have oath of office for the newly-elected supervisor swearing in. That's swearing in, not swearing out, by the way.
That's on my term. It's an excellent coming up.
If I got the phones off, we'll take a picture.
Where's Norah Kress when you need him?
Hi, Richard Miller.
Hi, Richard Miller.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
Citizen of the state of Florida.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
And being an officer of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District Board of Supervisors.
And being an officer of the Sun and Lake of Supervisors, Board of Supervisors.
And a recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
You hereby solemnly swear.
You hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
And that I will honestly.
And I will honestly.
Faithfully and impartially perform the duties.
Faithfully and impartially perform the duties.
Entrusted to me while in the office.
Entrusted to me while in the office.
As supervisor of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District Board of Supervisors.
Well, as supervisor, the office of supervisor, the Sun and Lake Board of Supervisors.
And will not neglect any duty imposed upon me by law.
And will not neglect any duty imposed upon me by law.
So help me God.
So help me God. Okay, as always, please turn over your, turn off your cellphones. And we move to the consent agenda. We have the minutes and the treasures reports. I have some comments. Does anybody have, does anybody else have comments?
I had a couple of questions.
Kurt, go ahead.
Well, I had a question for, do we need a motion approved?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, very good.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, now discussion.
I had a question on the, on the treasures report, but Tanya's not here, but I got a feeling Greg could probably answer it. On page 34, there was a whole bunch of cellphone charges. Do you have any idea what that's for?
Well, cellphone charges, every district staff has reimbursement.
This isn't that. It's something different.
I gotta look that up.
There's a, because I know the staff gets, what, 50 bucks or whatever it is or something like that. And these are like 86, 97, 47, 19. They're just numbers all over the place. And it's just, it's not a.
We'll get you the answer. Ms. Kennedy will be here later in the meeting. She had an appointment this morning. She could not have rescheduled.
The other, the other question I had was, I thought Hornick is all paid up, but it shows that he still owes 60,000 bucks. What's that?
There are several properties in Unit 16 that he has outstanding funds on, and I don't anticipate, we don't anticipate him paying for those.
I thought that would be part of the whole program for forgiving the 15,000 that he got current on everything.
Well, I can't respond to that.
You're, you're right.
Well, that was my impression, so.
That was mine.
Mike, will you look into that, please?
Oh, I, I know for a fact there are several lots that are non-golf course lots in 16 that have high bond debt, and that's not what you're referring to.
But, but as Kurt said, we were under the impression that we had an agreement that that would, that debt would be removed pending our forgiveness, so.
We'll have to research the minutes and get it out to you, make a note on that.
Okay. Anything else? I have a couple of questions on the treasures report, and I have one comment on the minutes. Under revenues, can somebody tell me again, memberships, is that memberships outside of golf?
What page is that?
That's on the first page. Yeah, general fund, actual revenues.
Yeah, it would be. If it's not in the golf fund, it would be, it would be the memberships for tennis and the pool, et cetera.
Okay. Small thing, but could we put non-golf memberships on that so we know what we're talking about? And then under special events and advertising, we're already up to 93%. To Neil, where's, is Neil here? Are we having unusual success there, or what is that, that story? Special events advertising, we have a budget of 13,000. We've already taken in 12,000.
Is that the revenue line you're talking about?
Yeah, that's revenue.
The special event income, that's for, that was from trick or trot. That's how much we brought in for trick or trot.
Yeah, the, the point is, that was a fairly low target, but we're, we're doing quite well in that area.
Yes. We, we upped it to, we upped the revenues from three grand to 10 grand for this year as a target, and we've already surpassed it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good performance.
Thank you.
Last question on that. Transfer out golf equipment. I'm not sure what that, that is. Is that the stuff we bought?
Yes, sir. We budgeted in general fund.
Okay. On the minutes, if you go to page six, Allison, oh, about a third of the way down, it said, President Miller thanked MS Smith for supplying them with the membership numbers and stated he's impressed with the growth, but questioned whether golf memberships should be excluded from the numbers. That's a little vague to somebody that was not familiar with that. We're talking memberships again. We're talking about tennis and fitness and so forth, and I wonder if you could just make a small adjustment so that everybody would know what, what that was referred to.
Golf memberships.
Yeah, in, in, in the golf, in the conversation. That's all I have. Any further board discussion? Public discussion?
Tom Costy, resident. Small point. I noticed that the minutes since the last meeting in September are all still marked draft copies on the, on the district website. That could be a little misleading. I think most of those meetings were approved. I don't know if there were any approved as amended, but they're still indicated as draft copies for the October meetings, the November meetings, the December meeting, not the December meeting, I don't think the minutes are up yet, but.
Well, I, I assume.
They're, they're marked as draft.
Yeah, I assume that that would be the case until the president signs them, and then it should be changed. Is that correct, Allison?
That is correct.
So we're just not changing them, because I did sign all those recently.
Yes, you signed those when you came back from your vacation, so I will get those cleaned up.
We're talking the first week in October, just got signed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Allison, we're still making it a priority to get those, those minutes up as quickly as possible.
They go up when the addendum packets go out.
In draft form, okay.
Yes, as soon as possible. It's supposed to be ready as soon as possible, not just in time for the next meeting. That's what the statute says.
Well, that's, that's what we're just talking about, Tom.
Just packing for the next meeting.
Well, that, that, that's before the next, that's at least a week before the next meeting.
They used to be up the week after the meeting.
Yeah, well, suffice it to say, we'll, we'll make that, hopefully, continuing the priority to get them up quickly. Do we have something else? On this particular subject?
No.
We have, we have public discussion later in general, unless one of the agendas hits you on that. Okay, any further public discussion on this particular topic? Back to the board. Allison?
Supervisor Halbert.
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough.
Yes.
Supervisor Habig.
Yes.
Supervisor Wright.
Yes.
President Miller.
Yes. Okay, action agenda, first item, Resolution 2015-01. It's a resolution to create a new policy for the district regarding utility line taps. Mike?
Mr. McCour is going to handle that.
Motion approved.
Second.
Who is handling that?
He had asked for me to address that, sir.
Okay.
Is that on? Okay. The, as I'm sure everybody here recalls, there was the issue out of Manor Hill regarding a sewer tap that went directly to the sewer line as opposed to the pre-established tap, and a great expense was incurred based on weather conditions encountered, et cetera. The policy was drafted pursuant to the discussion from that meeting regarding, you get one water tap, one sewer tap per lot at the rates under the district fee schedule. If you want additional connections, the district will charge the property owner the actual cost of the connections if those exceed the rates published and improve tap fees and additional connections beyond the original water tap or sewer tap require the prior approval of the Board of Supervisors. So that's for you, for your consideration as an addition to existing district policies as K-1017.
How does that address the problem that we?
Well, this would require the property owner to have come back and tear up his driveway and go tap into the one tap that he already had coming out of the main line instead of creating an additional tap on the main line. He could still do the additional tap on the main line, but he has to agree to pay the costs that were encountered, and the costs that were encountered well exceeded the actual charge.
But I guess where I was confused, it doesn't kind of read that way. I mean, to me, it reads like you get one water tap and one sewer tap, and it doesn't say at the pre-designed location or any location. That's kind of where I got confused with the whole thing.
Okay.
I mean, it should be the pre-tapped or pre-whatever you want to call that connection. The homeowner would tap there. If he wants to tap some other place, then he would be responsible for the cost.
I'll, I'll have to have the utility guys address that.
When water lines are installed, typically the only thing that is tapped initially is water. Sewer is, the sewer lateral can be tapped at any point. There are instances where they are tapped at the time in which the line is put in. Typically, that happens if they occur under the road, but there are also instances where there are no taps on, on existing lots. There's just a line that we have to tap into, so it wouldn't be a pre-existing condition per se.
Well, if, I guess if I was a homeowner and I read this, I would say I'm entitled to a water tap. I want to tap here, and you.
If, if you were a homeowner, that means you've already got a tap.
Right.
If you were building, if you, to clarify on that, if you're, if you were building on a, on a vacant lot.
Okay.
There, a lot of lots do not currently have taps in place. The, and we do often allow the homeowner to put it on one side of the lot or the other. What you typically have is for, at every other lot line, so you'll have two taps that service one house or two houses, then you'll skip the next lot line, and at the following lot line, you'll have two more, or two lot lines down, you'll have two more taps, so that you've got two meters together that hopscot basically every, every few lots.
Sorry.
My, my understanding of this policy was, when you, when you already have a house on the lot, in other words.
Yeah.
They're already tapped in, so.
The intent was to address existing, existing houses that had taps, and this, I believe this solely addresses folks who want a second tap.
Well, not really, not really, because this place is quite a burden on the district staff to make it perfectly clear to that, that owner of what might be involved. And I go back to this problem we had on Sunrise where the actual cost was more than 10 times what the quoted fee was. And what homeowner is going to sit there and say, well, I'm looking at 800 bucks, now I'm looking at 12,000? How do we handle that? What's, what's your?
Well, and it boils down, it's the homeowner's choice. If the cost of, if the cost of tearing up their driveway landscaping was $20,000, I would expect they'd use the $10,000 route. But what this does is that this provides the provision for them to make that decision. They can either tap into their, their original tap and, and tear up their driveway in that instance, or they could pay the district, the, the fees incurred by the district to provide that second tap. But at either, at either situation, the homeowner would be ultimately responsible for that tap, whether it's tapping into the existing or putting a new tap in.
Let's go back to Sunrise. You didn't anticipate what, what was going to happen, did you?
Absolutely not.
So when you're, you're having the preliminary discussion with the homeowner, this is not an issue at that time or not a factor, and suddenly it becomes a factor. I'm a little worried about how we're going to treat something like that, because we've gone from A to Z. We bore the cost of this mess this time, and what this does, I guess, John, transfers everything to the responsibility of the homeowner, whether or not we're, we're correct in terms of what our assessment of that situation was. It's kind of fuzzy.
What you're saying, frankly, is homeowner writes a blank check, the way it's written.
Yeah.
And I understand your concern about that.
Well, sure.
And, and so unfortunately, let's, let's take this back to the situation at hand. Had, had the district given a good faith estimate by which the district would be bound for this additional tap, I would expect that estimate to be far lower than the actual cost incurred based on the unexpected conditions encountered. So I don't know of a good way to address this. If.
Well, I don't think you're answering this question with a one paragraph policy. What I'm suggesting is that you might want to go back and rethink that thing in terms of what steps should be included in there so that everybody is, is, is on the same page and, and has a fair shot, because, for example, your example, it's a quoted tap fee, what, 800, 900 dollars?
The established fee, yes.
Okay, and then our guys come in and say, well, gee, it looks like it's going to be about 1,600 because we have to do this, this, and this. Suddenly break something, or something's in the wrong place, and we're up to, say, 7,000. You know, there needs to be some sort of, I guess, common procedure or something. I don't know. I don't know. But it bothers me that the, I don't think a homeowner should have a blank check for that, that type of service.
The mechanism that would, that would most easily solve that problem would be to have a, an independent contractor provide the estimate to do that. But the homeowner, even in that instance, wouldn't be protected from unforeseen conditions such as what occurred in, in this instance. We can provide a good faith estimate. We can say, you know, we, we estimate that cost to be 2,000, 2,500, 3,000 dollars, whatever that number may be. If you hit groundwater, you end up de-watering, you end up doing, going through all the steps that we had to, to complete this process, there is no protection for the homeowner. So if you want to, want to choose either a contractor or the district to develop that good faith estimate, and the district covers the cost beyond that, that would be one methodology that you could, that you could use. Unfortunately, there is no simple solution for, for, for the very reason that there are unforeseen conditions.
Is this a service we have to provide?
Typically, every utility will be responsible for tapping their own lines. You won't see anybody, you won't see anybody than, other than the power company tap into a power line, gas company for gas lines, and water and sewer companies for their own sewer lines. We, we, we are the provider of the actual tap.
Maybe you can comment?
Yeah, clearly we made a mistake when we told the guy we'd do this, because I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, almost all the plotted lots that are on a sewer system have already got a tap that, that doesn't require you to go out into the roadway, isn't that correct?
That is not correct. There are certainly lots out there that have sewer lines under the roads that do not have existing taps.
You have a map on that? You know which ones they are?
No, we haven't, we have, I mean, we can speculate.
I was under the impression, I was under the impression, but clearly we made a mistake. I, I don't, I think, I think the homeowner should be responsible for, for this, and, and it ought, maybe we ought better define what the costs are going to be, because this 12 or 13,000 dollars that has cost us to do this, which is the first time this ever happened, as far as I know, in 40 years in this district, where somebody's got two sewer taps, did not include our internal labor or, or any of our equipment that we used on it, so that price is probably close to, I don't know what it ended up, and we had, we had another bill, 1,750 from Polson in this last, this last set of accounts. That's probably close to between 12 and 15,000 dollars. And so we ought to clearly define or make sure that when, when this happens, that the homeowner signs something, some kind of document, said he's going to be responsible for all the costs, including our internal costs on it, and let him make the decision whether he wants to do it or, or, or whatever. But, but the last sentence in this thing is ridiculous, I think. It says, "Such additional connections beyond the original water tap, the sewer tap shall require the prior approval of the Board of Supervisors." We're, the Board of Supervisors puts together the policy. The implementation of the management of the policy is, is the district staff. I don't want to have every homeowner come in here and wants a second sewer tap, come to the Board of Supervisors meeting. That should be done internally. There's no reason for that to happen. So in, in my opinion, this thing needs to be cleaned up a little bit and, and brought back.
So how do you want to handle the provision regarding either a good faith estimate or having an independent contractor provide an estimate, which is still nothing more than an estimate because of existing site conditions and unforeseen circumstances?
Should be time and material, period. Let him make the decision. This is what it's going to call. Whatever it costs, you've got to pay it.
Well, that's what it says now, but there was some.
If not, tap into, tap into your existing line, which you should have been told, that guy should have been told in the first place.
Sure.
You should have said, tap into your other line and walked away.
That's what.
And we wouldn't be sitting there arguing about this.
Time tight, David. Or, time tight.
That's what the existing resolution says, but there was some concern amongst the other board members regarding limitations on costs.
But Supervisor Halbig is right. I mean, why, why do we, as a Board of Supervisors, have to rule on every situation on this when it's clearly something that the district said? That's what I'm, that's why I'm arguing for more clarification.
If you drop the last sentence, which it basically says, "The district shall charge the property owner the actual cost of the additional connections."
That's all you need. Period. Mm-hmm. Period.
Even if it goes over and above the good faith estimate.
So.
It's just. So you can approve this with the deletion of the last sentence, if that's your desire.
And it's all the cost, internal cost as well as if you have to de-water, if you have to, if you have to call in somebody to, to dig up the road or repave the road, all the engineering costs associated with it, everything.
Well, that brings up another question. As far as I'm aware, we do not have a set hard cost for an hourly rate for individual employees.
Well, you're a pretty smart guy.
You ought to be able to figure that out and at least cover our cost, anyway.
We can do that.
Well, we should do that.
I would suggest to the board that if, in doing so, that may well be a, a classification as a user fee that would require the 10-day notice of publication and adoption by the board. I, I would, I just think you're in dangerous territory to start charging a certain hourly rate without it being established somehow.
John, I think actual cost of coverage, we can calculate an actual.
Well, we have a published cost, per hour cost for every one of our employees.
We do have hourly employees. I agree with that. Okay, that's fine. I'm just saying, when you go charging fees to people, they, that, that tends to be an issue that comes up. Mr. Wright seems to think that we can determine the hourly rates and, and proceed from there. I'm okay with that.
Public information, sure.
Okay.
I, I, I think if we're going to approve this, approve this with the deletion of that last sentence, I'm still would be more comfortable, Greg, if, if we would have in-house a procedure set up in writing that we go from point A to B to C to D if this situation comes up again. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Okay.
Any more board comments?
We may look to drop that last one.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Yes, you do. Yeah, okay. Why don't we get public discussion, if we have any, before we go to that? Is there any public discussion on that? What?
Could I respectfully suggest, sir, that you go ahead and get the amendment out of the way now and then do the public discussion, sir? That way you don't have to have two public discussions.
Tomato and tomato, okay. Do I have a proposal?
I move that we drop the last line of the paragraph in Exhibit A.
Second.
Is that satisfactory as stated?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now we're back to discussion again. I think the board has said what it wants to say. Is there any public discussion on this?
Tom Costy, resident, I apologize for getting up here again, but does that then include the terms external and internal costs?
Yes.
That's, that's noted in the, in the amended resolution?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, it says actual cost, Tom, so that can be interpreted. Okay, anybody else?
Rex Bond, resident of Sun and Lake. A couple of questions, please. Some other subdivisions in the area do not try to segregate out too many people because there's a lot of bookkeeping, a lot of work. In other words, someone made the comment a while ago about they wouldn't be tapping into the main line. Gosh, we just don't allow, as far as I know, tapping into a lateral that's, that's there. Why would you need to put a meter there? In other words, you've got a line going into your house now, comes off the main line, usually in the backyard.
I'll let our staff answer that.
In other words, I use Spring Lake as an example. They have some pretty good stuff out there and bad stuff, like the rest of us, but they have a flat fee regardless of whatever it is, the same service is for everybody. But the thing that bothers me about ours is what are, what are they going to use that for? Or would you pay for a tap in now for a lot? Well, we have some problems now determining what is a lot. Do we go by the flooded subdivision in Highlands County? If a man wants to put a little house out in that 50-foot addition and put some water and sewer out there, is, do we want to do that? I'm just asking, what can you do if you change this?
Well, you've got apples and oranges, sir. First of all, the, the cost or fee of the original connections are, are well-established. There's no, no question about that, and have been in effect, and it is what it is, and it's fully accepted. What we had here was incredibly, what should I say, unusual situation where a simple, supposedly a simple tap exploded into a major situation. We're trying to deal with that. So your, your question, I think your initial question was, why have that second tap? And I'll, I'll let our, our district engineer speak to that point.
I think, and I'll say this, I'm certainly not opposed to whatever the circumstances are. If I understand it, two people, one had a lot on one side adjoining, one on the other, and they decided, and then somebody bought 50 feet and somebody bought 50 feet. Well, there's not much you can do with that.
Well, we're, we're talking now about getting another tap for this, this house, and I suppose that if a homeowner wants that, we service that and we, we charge for that.
This was a sewer tap, not a water tap.
Yeah.
And it was a case where they added a bathroom to a house that was on the opposite side of the sewer tap, and the homeowner elected to go directly into the sewer line rather than go into their lateral.
I don't see a problem, to tell you the truth. I don't know what we have spent all this time.
It wasn't a problem until we ended up costing ourselves 15 times as much as the quoted fee for that, and that's what we're dealing with.
And why was that? Because we sold that lot to somebody. I think it was in the district name.
It's not a lot situation, it's a connection situation, and the whole.
It all is together. In other words, that 50 feet is almost worthless except to help hold the earth together and those folks to plant flowers and do whatever they want to landscape, but to approve an additional tap when you already have a tap. But to approve an additional tap, when you already have a tap on a single-family piece of property, it's not only going to create a problem for the district, but it'll create a problem for these folks. Somebody's going to pay.
You just heard the explanation for this particular situation. They put in an extra bathroom, and needed another tap.
And this is an exception to the rule. This is not becoming a permanent...
You're right. It's an exception to the rule.
And that's fine. That's fine. It's just, you know, when you start taking, or have a plan, and then all of a sudden you leave that plan, it's not good. So, this is an exception, and it should be treated as such. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rex. Let's bring it back to the board. Did you have a comment on this particular situation?
Okay, pardon my naivete, but this is the first time...
You need to identify yourself, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Linda Ritchie. I'm a joint owner of a property on Ponce de Leon. This is the first time. I'm not familiar with the jargon. I understand that the district provides the estimate for the homeowner. Is that my understanding of this discussion?
Well, this particular connection, yeah.
Oh, right. So then my question is, what expertise does the configuration of people sitting on the stage, which I don't know what the proper vocabulary is at this moment, whom do they consult in order to make this estimate, in terms of...
Well, first of all, we don't make the estimate.
Okay.
Our staff makes the estimate.
Okay, gotcha.
And our staff, in this situation, are graduate professional people in the area.
Thank you.
So, it's an engineering decision.
One thing I want to clarify, that may be confusing for you. We're not addressing the initial tap. The initial tap fee will be the same.
Yes, I understand.
This is an instance where if you needed a second tap...
Second tap.
For instance, your initial tap was on, say, the right side of your house. You built a bathroom on the left side of the house.
Correct.
And it would cost you a tremendous expense to bring your sewer line to that other tap.
Correct.
So this is solely for a second tap.
Yes, got it. Thank you. Very clear now.
Yeah, just a further comment. That is exactly why we don't want to bring this back before the board every time something like this happens, so it should be a staff thing. Okay, bring it back to the board. Okay, Allison?
At this point, you're just voting on the amendment to strike that second word, and then after that, we'll have to discuss the motion as amended. So just to clarify what it is you're voting on.
Okay.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Holbert?
Yes.
President Miller?
Yes. Now, are we done with this? We're not done with this. One more time.
Now, the resolution as amended has to come to a vote.
Motion to approve, the resolution as amended.
Seconded.
Board discussion. Public discussion. Back to the board. Allison?
Supervisor Halbig?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Holbert?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President Miller?
Yes. Okay. Item B, Resolution 201-5-01-9-02, and that's to create a new district policy regarding residential assessment methods on unified title parcels. John, I assume you want to...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay. John, I assume that you're going to lead on this?
Yes, sir. This would be a policy of the district to clarify two things. Number one, that just because you have a unity of title doesn't mean you are only assessed on the basis of one lot. The lots would continue to be assessed on the basis of multiple lots. It clearly states that this would be the lot with the primary improvement is assessed as improved, and the remaining lots in the unity of title agreement, assuming there's only one residence on the unified parcels, would be assessed on the basis of unimproved property. If it fell into the category of residential acreage, then that assessment would apply, meaning, obviously, more than an acre.
Why would the additional lot be unimproved, if it's joined with an improvement? Would it all be improved?
Well, the issue there is, you have to do it on the basis of benefit to the property. And the benefits we provide to the property as unimproved would typically be, okay, if you've got a house, or as improved, I'm sorry, you've got a house, and all of our improvements deal with a single residence, so if you looked at what is that, ninety-eight-two, I think that resolution we adopted a long time ago, that details all the benefits of the district, that would only affect a single residence. If you, the other properties just ground, so to speak, you know? So, by assessing that as improved as well, you tend to run up against an argument that this is not really an additional benefit provided to me at my property.
John, if it's a... But lots without homes on them are assessed as improved, and nobody's living on it. Doesn't this cloud the issue? This unity of title thing cloud this issue up a lot? Because we had an occasion not too long ago, and I can't remember the background of the circumstances, where, I think it was in Magnolia Place, they wanted to do a unity of title, which basically would have lost quite a bit of assessment money because of the unity of title thing. I don't see where the... Actually, I researched this unity of title definition, and there's two definitions. There's a legal definition, which is, means the people that sign the title, and I've got a copy of it here, and then there's a Highlands County unity of title definition that has to do with zoning. And I've got it here, too. So I think adding this, and by the way, I asked Michael if this is just to clarify what we've been doing in the past, and he sent me an email and said, "Yes, it's just to formalize what we've been doing." And that's not even close to the truth, because, number one, we're adding this unity of title thing, and by the way, Tanya, we have not been, these lots that are a lot and a half, they have not been assessed as unimproved. I've got three or four examples here. They have not been assessed as unimproved. They've been assessed as the same as the lot, primary lot.
That's the way it should be. That's the way it should be, actually.
Yeah, I know. That's what I say, it should be.
Okay.
But this resolution says unimproved.
Let's define improved and unimproved. Are you talking about a lot with a street and utilities? Or are you talking about a lot with a dwelling on it?
What's that, Mike?
Are you talking about, when you say improved or unimproved, are you referring to unimproved being a lot with a street and utilities available, or a street and drainage?
You guys wrote the resolution. What do you mean by, what you're saying in the resolution?
I would just...
It is.
Just time for a comment, Holbert, please. I would suggest this, okay? Let's take, for example, the Magnolia Place properties. So here we have a single lot that fronts on Sun and Lake Boulevard. Then we have two other lots, so there's no other road, okay? They just go down to the golf course. So, and then let's compare that with, let's say, a lot in Manor Hill, where you have three lots up front on a road, and the house is built on either the middle lot, or it's such a large house, it's built over into all three lots. Who knows? So now you've got multiple options of how you assess those properties. If you assess on the basis of the, for the Magnolia, I'm sorry, for the, yeah, the Magnolia property I'm talking about, you would say, okay, we've got one lot that's improved with road and drainage, and utilities up on the road. Then the other two lots are not so improved, but we build our house on the middle of the three lots, so we'll assess that one as fully improved, but it isn't really fully improved, because it doesn't have a road there. It's just a house. You can see the permutations are numerous.
I agree. I agree, they are. But this resolution says that we're going to, number one, we're going to, people have to apply for this unity of title, and not all these properties would apply, because some of these have already got a warranty deed on them that described the lot and a half, okay? So that's already done, as far as that unity of title, that's already done.
I beg to differ with that, sir. Just because, I can get a warranty deed with as many properties on it as you want. That does not create a unity of title at all. And you must have a unity of title through the county, if you're going to build on multiple lots. Or, a good example is what I just talked about. You have three lots in Manor Hill, and you want a declaration of unity of title. Well, what does that do? That means you can build your house on those three lots, and you get all three lots, and you have a declaration of homestead, you're homestead protected, you tax as a single lot for purposes of taxes. That is the real reason why most people do a unity of title. It gives them the opportunity to have additional properties, all declared as unified, for purposes of homestead, and it also allows you to build on more than one lot, for the same building.
Okay.
Okay? That's why people do that.
Okay, and I agree. As long as they're paying assessments on the remaining lots, and the classification that they should be paying for, I don't have any problem with that. But to say that we've been assessing these other portions of these properties as unimproved is wrong.
Well, let's take the ones on Angelo Circle. Can you correct me? I believe we assessed, there's about three lots there that have, they're a lot and a half, and we've assessed those as improved with a house on it, and then vacant. Is that right? A half part as a vacant property, is how we've assessed them in the past. Those are the ones that come to mind, with the exception of Robert's house.
Well, I looked at the Robert's property, and the two properties on either side of those.
Yeah, and the two of them.
And Patel's property on Sunrise. Patel's property on Sunrise is not, I mean, they don't fall under the classification of unimproved. They're paying the lot with roads and drainage fee on that, along with the golf course lot classification. I mean, this thing is all a mess, a mess, really.
Well, I think we looked at Angelo, that's the one that comes to mind, and the two properties excluding Robert's were assessed as a one-improved lot with a house, and then one vacant property, a half of a vacant property, is how we assessed it, and as a golf course front.
Well, we're not consistent in what we're doing. We're inconsistent in what we're doing.
Hopefully, this policy will, if we're inconsistent, this policy would clarify that.
Or if you, just tell us what you would like, and we can address it. The main reason for this policy, sir, is because there are people, apparently like the bank, that felt that if, are numerous people. I've had Jonathan Jones call me up, saying, "Look, if I do a unity of title here, how does that affect my district assessments?" And that's what I'm trying to get in writing, is how does it affect the district assessments? That's really it, because there's a misperception out there, that if we have a unity of title, we're a single lot, and that's how we're assessed, because that's the way the taxes are levied. But that's really, the district, on the other hand, is not, we don't levy taxes on an abhorrent basis. We do it on the basis of lots and benefits received per lot.
Right.
Right. As long as it doesn't give the person that does this unity of title the opportunity to build in, say, buy five lots, build in the middle lot, and get a unity of title that does away with the assessments for the other lots.
What this does.
Okay?
Okay.
I think it probably needs to be written that the additional lots are be assessed as per the same, with the same classification as the primary lot.
So the example, let's go back to the example I gave. In Manor Hill, let's say we have three lots up front on a road, and we build on the middle lot. So we have the other two on each side. We do a unity of title, and so what you're asserting then would be, we get a fully improved lot for the middle lot, and the other two would be lots improved with roads and utilities.
That would be assuming that there'd be legal descriptions of those various properties, right?
Based on the plat.
It would be based on the plat. So, I mean, like you had Lot 1, 2, and 3, and you built on Lot 2. Lots 1 and 3 were vacant. Typically, if you don't do a unity of title, that means lots 1 and 3 can be built upon at any time. You could sell those to anybody, and they could build a house there.
Right.
If, on the other hand, you have a unity of title, you can't do that.
That's right.
You know? So that was the basis for the assertion that we put in here, was you really have a single-family residence, you're still paying for unimproved lots, for the ones that aren't built upon, but the primary basis still is on the, you have a primary improvement lot, and you pay the full boat for that. So, the example I just gave would be, the ones that are out in Magnolia are going to get less of an assessment than the ones in Manor Hill, because the Manor Hill lots are all three on a road, the ones in Magnolia only have one lot on the road, and the other two are interior. And it's really difficult to discern the difference, for me, you know, I mean, in terms of benefits received by the property. That's the real reason.
Now, how do we get around that, then, in the resolution, and say, "Well, then we're going to build the remaining properties if they do this unity of title situation"? How do we get around the fact that some are going to have to be assessed with roads and drainage, and others as unimproved?
Well, I guess my point here is this. When you do a unity of title, you remove those other properties from development. So, you're paying your full boat on your house, and then you're paying unimproved on the rest of your grounds. If it gets to residential acreage, then that bumps you into a different category. So, in fact, I would expect, if you looked at the residential acreage number, it's going to be pretty much kind of developed as we're talking about here.
That probably makes a lot of sense, John. I mean, what you just said, that probably makes a lot of sense, because they have to go through the fire of hell to go back and replot that, or rezone that.
That's exactly right.
Right.
See, so if you don't do a unity of title, and you've got those lots out there, and you want an opportunity for resale, you ought to be paying the full boat for that. I agree. On the other hand, if it's unified, and that's where you live, and that's all your grounds, you ought to be paying for, I think, one assessment, and the rest of it is unimproved.
What advantage, then? What advantage, then, is unity of title?
The advantage is exactly what I addressed, sir, and to the district, none. For the homeowner, it's all about being able to have how much you can declare as homestead, and be homestead protected. Very important in the state of Florida.
That answers that, okay.
Do you have an example of somebody that's got a unity of title in this district? I mean, this is, is there any that you know?
Well, I know for sure the Magnolias are unity of title.
Oh, are they? Okay.
Yes.
They were rezoned, weren't they?
No.
No, not rezoned, but...
They just did a unity of titles.
They created...
For the ones on Sun and Lakes Boulevard?
Yes. They created seven lots instead of twenty-one lots. So they have seven golf course frontage lots that are deep.
Right.
Because they unified three title, three properties, seven times across.
But shouldn't they have been rezoned?
No. Zoning's different from unity of title.
Zoning says, what can you build on the properties? Zone for residential, so that's all they're going to use.
All right. Now, let me ask a question. At some point in time, if they build on the front, the Sun and Lakes Boulevard lots, okay? And those seven people decide that they want to put a road in behind them, and sell off the back lots, they could still do it?
So they have to go to the Board of County Commissioners.
Right.
Get the county to approve the separation, and at that time, we would change how we assess the properties, because they would all be improved now with road frontage, not subject to a declaration of unity of title. Our assessment could easily be changed. This limits it to a declaration of unity of title. This is what is addressed here.
Okay. Because I know, when I was on a board back in Michigan, we had people that would come in, and they'd buy five fifty-foot lots. And because the minimum amount of frontage was seventy-five foot, they would take those fifty-foot lots and break them up into seventy-five-foot lots.
Sure.
And we stopped it, because they were overextending into wetlands and so forth. But that was another case, where they were trying to get more out of the property than they really should be getting out of the property. They should have, you know, they should have been hundred-foot lots, instead of fifty-foot lots. They should have, you know, they should have been 100-foot lots instead of 50-foot lots or 75-foot lots, which was the minimum.
How many of these properties, what's, the impact of the district couldn't be that much. I mean, if, like Patel, if he would, if he would do a unity of title where he is over on Sunrise and, I mean, it'll be, because there's a couple hundred dollars differential between an unimproved and a lot with roads and drainage, but there's not that many of those properties, is there?
Uh-uh.
I mean, it seems, seems like the right thing to do, but I think also the right thing to do once, if, if we get this thing settled is to, is to notify everybody so that they have the advantage of doing that. The properties, uh, the properties that are affected should be sent a notice that they've, they've got the opportunity to do that before the next budget comes around and, and people are given an assessment bill. You think that would, that we could do that? You think that would work? I mean, not everybody that's affected is sitting here in front of us that knows, knows what's, that they, they have the opportunity to do that. If there's not that many properties, I don't know what, why you're sitting there frowning about it.
I'm trying to think, Mr. Taubig, the fact that I may have a wrinkled brow doesn't mean I'm not trying to think it through.
Oh, okay.
Um, I think what it boils down to is unity of title is beneficial from a taxation standpoint, but from an assessment standpoint, it has no impact. And I think that's.
Oh, yeah, it does. It does, Mike, because we've been, we've been assessing these people, uh, like Patel and like, uh, Roberts and like the other two lots, we've been assessing them for a lot with roads and drainage. So it does have an impact.
And it is a lot with roads and drainage.
Do what?
The, the ones on Angelo Circle have roads and drainage.
I know it, but this, this resolution said that if you do a unity of title, that we're going to do it as unimproved.
Okay, I think, again, I'm going back to definition. When we say unimproved, you have an unimproved lot that has no road and drainage, you have an unimproved lot with road and drainage, you have two different fees. And whatever is applicable would apply. For example, in Magnolia, the interior lots have no roads or drainage. In Angelo Circle, they do. So one would be at a $292 rate and one would be at a $500 rate.
Yeah, but the, the resolution don't say that.
But that's.
I mean, if the resolution says that it's, it's, you're going to, you're going to assess the balance of the property as per the primary property, that's one thing. But this says unimproved and that's the problem that I've got with it and I said it a while ago.
It's still the unimproved rate, it just depends on which unimproved rate. You have an unimproved rate with roads and drainage and you have an unimproved rate without roads and drainage.
I got the rate schedule in front of me. I don't see an unimproved rate with roads and drainage and an unimproved, I see an unimproved lot, $294.62. And then I see a lot with roads and drainage is $499.43.
And again, we're getting into the word improvement. Improvement is, we refer to that as a vacant lot with roads and drainage. And maybe that's the definitional issue. Your primary lot, which has a dwelling on it, it's, and in the golf course case, is charged roughly $700. The vacant part is charged roughly $500. That's because it has roads and drainage. In the Magnolia case, you would charge the frontage lot $500 and the interior lots roughly $300.
So why don't you just say that in the resolution?
Uh.
State that there's two unimproved lot schedules.
Well, I, I can answer that. My understanding was, uh, not the same as what Mr. Wright just explained, so I apologize for that. We are obviously not on the same page. My understanding was it would be unimproved property, period.
Period, yeah.
Not without consideration of, of roads or other things because.
Yeah, but it makes sense to have that consideration, doesn't it?
Does it? That's what I'm saying.
To me, it does.
Yeah.
Well, to me.
You can't have one definition for one situation and another definition for another situation.
That's exactly what we're getting into if we do it that way.
Unless you have that circumstance. It's an unusual case.
Well, then, put it in. Let's clean it up. Clean it up.
Well, let me say this, sir, if I may, okay? Let's go back to the examples. On the Magnolia, we only have a little bit. And in Manor Hill, we would have three lots, okay? The whole example I gave was as long as you do not unify the, the title, then you always have the ability to sell those two lots on, those lot on either side of you, okay? And, and yes, you should be assessed in that case as vacant lots with roads and drainage, uh, roads and utilities. That, that makes sense. On the other hand, if it's all your property, then you should be paying the full boat on the one your house is on, but the other two should be unimproved.
Unimproved with roads.
Not with roads, but unimproved, period.
No. Because there's a road there.
No. All right, so we obviously are not on the same page.
Let me ask.
Can't help you.
Let me ask a question here. If we take it like you're talking, how many dollars difference? I think we're arguing over a few dollars. Because we don't have very many of them, it's, it's this way.
You may have a few dozen, a few couple of, you may have a couple of dozen like this.
You're talking at most $2,000 then, is that correct?
It's not going to be a lot of money.
We've got a $5 million budget and we're arguing over $2,000?
Pretty much.
Well, no, we're trying to clarify, I think, Larry. I mean, in all due respect, we're trying to clarify something that's muddy.
It will affect an individual.
What I think we're trying to do.
It will affect some people.
It will affect an individual.
Right. But you have to do the unity of title in order to get the unimproved rate. That's, that's basically what it says. And I, and I think that's probably right. And, and it's, there's a lot of effort to get the unity of title and there's a whole, whole lot of effort to go back to, to rescind it. But I still think people ought to be notified so they got the ability to, to do it if, if in case they decide to do it.
I, I write the words to your music. You just tell me what you want to do.
Wait, wait, wait. Let's think through the circumstances because one comes to mind on Sunning Lake Boulevard. You have a commercial property where you have a couple of adjacent parcels. Uh, I don't think they have a unity of title, but they use the property. And we assess them as, per our conversation of improved and then vacant property with roads and drainage, that's how we assess them. Uh, there's a couple of properties that come to mind there. I mean, notify them of what? That if you unify your title, you might reduce your taxes?
I, I could be wrong about this, sir, but I thought we were talking about residential. This is when the owner of multiple adjacent residential lots.
Well, that could be, well, you have the same case with commercial too. And we assess the commercial people, uh, as the, a developed property and the two vacant parcels at whatever the prevailing rate is for that type of property.
As you should.
Where are we going with this? It seemed to be rehashing this over and over again.
What this does in our mind at a staff level is, and let's give the example of the Angelo Circle properties. You would assess them as a developed property at roughly the $700 rate. And then the adjacent parcel you would do as, if it's a half lot, you would assess it half of the golf course frontage, but without a house. That's how we interpret the policy.
I, I respectfully think what we've just been talking about is if you don't have a unity of title, that's exactly how you assess it.
Right.
If you do have a unity of title, that other half lot would be assessed as unimproved property. That's, that would, that would be my understanding.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. Unimproved would be the lowest category, right?
Right.
Then we can do that, put it.
That makes, that makes sense.
Whatever your pleasure.
Let me throw a monkey wrench in here.
No, don't do that.
Okay?
Be our guest, there's plenty out there now.
Let's say, let's say, um, two homeowners.
Don't look at me, look at him.
Decide to buy a lot that's vacant between them. And they decide to split that lot so that they can both have half of it, right?
Which is a very common thing.
And make it into grassy, shrubbed area for the kids to have a playground, whatever.
Sure.
Okay? Now, what do you do now?
That's exactly what we're talking about. If you get a unity of title, then that's assessed as unimproved property.
Exactly the situation on Angelo Circle, so. Well, in Angelo Circle, though, they, there's, it wasn't a, a full lot, it was a, a half lot anyhow. It was already a half lot.
If one of those gets a.
I'm talking about like in, in Manor Hill or something, two homeowners and there's a vacant lot in between them, a full lot where you could build a house.
I frequently get this in my office, sir. Somebody will come in from Spring Lake or somewhere else, they want to do exactly what you talked about, okay? So, so what you do is you split the lots, you record a unity of title agreement and they go down to the county and, and that's just increase their homestead area. And they're assessed as, and that's all part of their single tax assessment.
So they, they want to.
Tax assessment.
So maybe they want to build a, a third car garage.
Sure.
Over on, onto that piece of.
A storage shed or whatever.
Right. Well, okay, look, we've, we've got a resolution in front of us, we have a proposed, uh, policy, whatever you call it. John has defined improved and unimproved, which perhaps should be in this language. I don't know, but let's get on with it now. Is there any more board comment before I turn it over to public?
I just got one question on, on the unimproved lot rate schedule. There's two different rates for unimproved lots.
There are not. Actually, this, the vacant lot is considered an improved property improved by roads and utilities. So that is not unimproved. That, that, that's a misnomer that somehow I got before the board. Uh, it's, it's a vacant lot, but it's improved with roads and it is a higher classification category. Unimproved property would mean just that, unimproved with no improvements.
Well, Michael mentioned about they would get charged with roads.
I, I think that created some confusion.
And what's your board's pleasure?
So basically, there's really only going to be one charge whether they got roads or not for the half lot.
Yes.
Basically, right?
That's right.
And what is that rate? $299 or whatever it is?
Ones, in rounding, one's roughly $300, one's roughly $500.
Where, where do you call for the two different prices? What's confusing to me?
Because our assessment rates have for the $300, those are basically lots in the woods.
But you're missing the point. The point is that the primary improvement is not $500, it's the 700-plus dollar.
I don't care about that one, I'm just.
The, the other, even, well, and it's, well, I don't know how else to say it. I've explained it three times.
Well, you're saying there's one rate, he's saying there's two rates and that's what I'm, what I'm confused.
And if the board wants us to assess the adjoining property, the other property at the lowest rate, we can do that. Or we can assess it based on what the actual use is. It's your pleasure, give us direction.
Well, I'm going to stop you right there and go to public discussion. We'll come back and hash this out final because the question is whether or not this policy as written is correct or not. Is there any public comment on this?
I think we're getting into a definition issue.
It's called unity of title or no? Tom Coste, resident. The county, when a unity of title is recorded, I believe, creates a strap number that covers that particular parcel. The district, in levying its non-ad valorem assessments, downloads the county list of strap numbers. And then we go to work and try to sift through this and figure out which of these strap numbers have more than one lot. In some cases, it's two, in some cases, it's five or 10. There's a total of 38 properties in the county inventory that have, that are residential properties, not necessarily with a house, but they're in residential, residentially zoned areas. There's a total of 38. When you take out those that just have one lot, there's a total of 38 that have either a half a lot or maybe eight lots in a couple of cases.
Entire district.
And this is in the entire district. So we're only talking 38 lots. But there are, these are, these are all covered by, individually by one strap number. The word strap is an acronym from section, township, range, area, and parcel. The county levies non-ad valorem assessments for garbage and now also for fire. And they put one assessment, non-ad valorem assessment, per strap number. I don't understand why this district, and it's gone back and forth three or four times in the last 40 years, between assessing and recognizing land in terms of lots or parcels. Since we start with downloading the parcel information from the county, why don't we levy our ad valorem, our non-ad valorem assessments on the same basis that the county does? When we gave West Sebring our fire protection, there were lots in Sunning Lakes that we were putting two non-ad valorem assessments on. But when the county got it, they only put one garbage collection, they've only got one garbage collection, non-ad valorem, and they've only got one fire protection, non-ad valorem. So somebody, the people were paying for two fire protection fees to Sunning Lake, but when it went to the county, it became one. We're only talking 38 properties and somewhere between 10 and $20,000 probably is the total on this thing that, that, that this has become an issue on. Why do we put all this on ourselves to try to go into the plats and count how many lots and is it 40% of a lot or 50%? Is it seven and a half lots? It's all covered in a county strap number. That's number one. Number two, I have a real concern with any time that we have a change in the board. Now, we still have two landowner elected supervisors on the board. But keep in mind, and it hasn't come up in any of these discussions yet, that when we're talking assessments, we're talking balance of voting power. You may not have realized it and nothing was said about it, but at the last meeting when we adjusted the assessments on a piece of property on Angelo, that person lost 40% of his voting power compared to his next door neighbor. And I don't think that's an issue.
Counterargument to your first argument, right?
Pardon me?
That's a counterargument.
I'm saying that I don't think that issue should be the prerogative of the Board of Supervisors of Sunning Lake. I think it ought to be handled in the plat office at the county. And if there's one parcel as far as the county's concerned, that's the way we should levy our assessments.
Interesting point.
It, to me, it would leave it open. I mean, especially, you know, we took this, this particular lot.
Let us react to that, Tom.
Well, let me just, one last point. I know I, I, the lot that we made the adjustment on was a 19,000 square foot lot. We have 2,000, 5,000 square foot lots out here in Unit 12. 2,000 of them, there are only 5,000. You can fit, you can fit four of those lots into that one that we reduce the assessments on. So we're talking balance of voting power here when we mess around with this assessment. John knows the story. I mean, there was, there was three or four lawsuits over a two-year period filed and then settled on the basis of messing with that voting balance that we now have is based on the amount of assessments paid.
When, when did those occur?
Uh, originally, it was one acre per vote. In 1974, the district voted on the basis of acres, one vote per acre. In 1983, it became one vote per lot. That was, in 2009, a letter was written to the county attorney and to Mr. Wright, who was the county administrator at the time, questioning the voting on a per lot basis versus a per acre basis. The county board subsequently, after a year of a couple of law firms getting involved in the thing, the county voted to go back to the one acre per vote.
Tom.
And a comp, you asked, the compromise then was made to put the whole thing to bed to vote on the basis of dollars of assessments. Now this board is changing assessments arbitrarily.
Now, what, what's your point? Are you, are you arguing for us to follow the parcel designation that the county does?
Yes, indeed.
And then there will change some, some voting power?
A few, but the ones that.
Let me clarify on the point you're trying to make.
The ones that would change would be reductions. Um, I would ask, I would, I do give them the courtesy of.
That would save us a lot of grief, wouldn't it?
Sure would.
Yeah? Do I have a reaction to that?
Well, there's no, there's no consistency in partial ID numbers either. With the county, I'm looking at a warranty deed that's got a, that's got, uh, four other extra, there's a slash and four more digits on it, on this, on this thing. So there're not, there're not consistency across the board for them transferring, uh, parcel ID numbers. I mean, it identifies a lot and a half, is what it basically does, does.
If I could also respectfully point out, uh, maybe that's been straightened out a little bit, but there historically was like one strap number assigned to fifteen lots, uh, in the district, and, and strap numbers are all over the place out here. Uh, so it's very difficult. I think it could be problematic. I, I understand Mr. Costy's position, uh, but, but there could be some unanticipated consequences of that in given applications. Because there, I think some of those still exist out there.
Okay, is there any other public comment?
Rex Bond. I'm just going to suggest, and I know that you folks are in a hurry, but, um, uh, I think the attorney would serve you well if he would let us take our time, I say us, the people here. Um, the Attorney General has put out several opinions about, uh, zoning, planning, plating, and of course, uh, one of the latest that he put out concerns this continuity of title. Now, I could probably, and, uh, it's, it's, it's a little different, in other words, I can't tell you whether our golf course was put on the plat as a common element. If so, property that affects property as to how you can classify, classify it. Um, suppose someone came in here today with a handful of money and wanted to buy two thousand, three thousand, four thousand lots. Of course, I think we have some for sale, I'm not sure. But anyhow, they can buy those lots and change the whole picture when it comes to the voting. So it does concern me, uh, Mr. Costy, about the voting along with the assessments, because that can change real quick if it falls into the hands of someone that wants to take over and control this board. Thank you.
I would also point out, sir, that there are three popularly elected supervisors now for that very issue, so there are what? There are three popularly elected supervisors, so no landowner can ever control the board, even if you elected both supervisors.
Okay. We're back to the board, we haven't solved a thing.
Well, I got, I got, I looked at the rate schedule here, and it says unimproved lot is only mentioned one time, and it's two hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Right.
That's right.
Period.
And that's what's-
So if it's a lot with road and drainage, it's not considered unimproved, so there's really only one rate that would apply, not what Mr. Wright said that two rates would apply.
Well, and that's what we need to clarify today.
It's right here, I just think we just clarified-
You just did.
Is that right?
That was my intention in the drafting of this resolution.
Okay.
And then, if that's, you know, and we can do that, I just want to make sure we all-
Okay, assume that we're headed in that direction. Does this statement as written cover all these questions in terms of clarifying what we want to do?
It does, in my opinion. It, the Declaration of Unity of Title, you get the one fully improved lot, the rest of it's unimproved. If there's no unity of title, you, you're assessed based on the ground conditions.
All right.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah.
He does have unimproved in here, and he does have fully improved, so that part is clear. And primary improvement shall be considered as a primary lot and assessed pursuant to the type of improvement. Is that clear to everybody? Assessed pursuant to the type of improvement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, in other words, um, does anybody have a question on, or concern on the wording of this particular, uh, policy, or however you want to call it? What has this become, John? Does this become, does this become a formal policy then?
It's, uh, D dash ten twenty, sir.
Okay, that's, goes in our policy manual, right?
Yes.
Okay, uh, does the board have any questions as to clarity of the written word here? Okay, um, if not, I'll call for a vote to approve. Allison?
Supervisor White.
Yes.
Supervisor Holbert.
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough.
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig.
Yes.
President Miller.
Yes. How about that? Okay, we now come to another fun part.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I'm sorry. How do people know that they can do this? That was another point I brought up all ago, and I never got clarification on it. The people that are, have, I mean, how, how does somebody know that they, they have the advantage or disadvantage of doing this unity of title, other than the people that are sitting here? How are we gonna notify them?
Do we have to?
Well-
It's not our responsibility, is it?
Well, I don't know, we had a guy come in here the other week complaining about his assessments because he didn't get notification. I think it's only fair that we notify these people that, that it is. And by the way, that guy's on this list too, because next year, his assessments should be what they are. And everybody else, everybody else, uh, included.
I think we're gonna get into that right here, aren't we?
Well, we're gonna get in, we're gonna get into that here, but, but we just, we just set forth a policy that, uh, that, I mean, we, somehow we gotta notify people that they've got the advantage, or the disadvantage of doing, of doing this.
Are, are you assuming that our decision earlier regarding that particular property is now automatically rescinded by this? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying that we granted relief on a property on, based on this year's assessment, but all bets are off next year, because that property should have been assessed the way it was. We've some, for some reason, give it, give relief, and, and I don't know if, I don't know what that, that paragraph says in there, but it's all, everything that we had prior to it is all, uh, whatever it says here about the revoked, uh, uh, what's the words? Uh, hereby, duh, 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 duh. That all resolutions or parcel resolutions are in conflict hereby, the same be revoked. Does that mean everything that happened prior to this is revoked?
If I might respectfully address that situation, sir? In, in my opinion, this resolution does not affect the board's prior determination at all, because the board's prior determination was that, based on, uh, your finding of the unique circumstances of this property, as I understood it, uh, you're going to assess it as a single lot instead of a lot and a half. That was the consideration of the board, which makes that, carves out an exception from all these general rules. So that's, I would, I would not consider your prior action to be affected by today's action, because that's a different thing.
That's, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, but, uh, but all bets are off on the assessment next year, that thing's gotta be assessed the way it is.
Well, again-
Okay, and what about, what about what I just said about notifying people about this unity of title thing?
With respect to the notification, sir, uh, if you, if the board, you know, if you want to have some separate, uh, blast to people about, uh, this is what we've determined, this is what the rules are, I'm, I'm sure that could be done. Uh, it, I would respectfully point out that the board's action today, of course, is posted on the website for anybody to look at, as well as added to the policies that the board publishes and maintains on the website. So if you want special notice beyond that, that would be up to your direction to the state.
Well, we've got a vehicle like, uh, our, our water and, uh, bills and so forth, we, we include information in that when we send that out, don't we, at times?
Yeah, but that only affects about a, a fourth of the properties inside the district.
Yeah, so what you're saying for complete coverage would be a special mailing?
I would expect that most of the properties that could be affected by a unity of title agreement also have a water meter, though.
May not, John.
I, I agree, it may not, you're exactly right.
Well, that would come pretty, pretty darn close, wouldn't it?
It would get the vast majority, I'm sure.
Am I getting wind up here, am I?
No, I just feel some sort of an obligation to, to notify people-
I agree, I agree.
Because they don't know.
I agree, there's no reason we can't put a note in the, uh, water bill, is there? Mike?
I'm just trying to think, uh, when you, rather than respond to a general statement, we can put anything into the mailer, I'm just trying to think of, uh, the unintended consequences that come from that.
Oh, look, we're doing a much better job of communicating. Tanille and her, her releases and the communicator that we have now, let's continue that.
I understand, but we can-
That's all, that's all Supervisor Halbig is asking, is put a note in there.
We can do that.
Okay.
Unintended circum, I mean, you, you, did we do something wrong?
No, I'm just trying to think it through, rather than reacting to a general statement.
All right, that's, let's move on. Okay, we have, uh, Item C, another fun item here. Discussion of Finality of Assessment Determination. John, is that, uh, that's you again, isn't it?
I regret to answer it in the pasta, but I'm-
This, this is your day, right? Okay, go ahead. Uh, no, this is discussion, so we don't have any resolutions. Go ahead, John.
Right. I guess a little bit of background is appropriate, uh, first. Uh, of course, uh, the situation that came up with Mr. Roberts, the board, uh, elected to hear the relief requested, uh, there were a lot of questions posed to me about, uh, could he appropriately have brought this before the board, given the fact that the budget had been adopted and the resolutions were done, et cetera? That's, that's really a tough question, I don't have a great answer for that, period, and here's why. This board does not have any formal adoptive procedures regarding this issue, and, and I think that, I cannot overemphasize that to you. I think you have to have some kind of adoptive procedures. The, the, the law says, uh, as to ad valorem assessments, which is a very different thing than what we do, we're non-ad valorem. But as ad valorem assessments, uh, you, you, once you get your notice, you have sixty days to contest it, and what's the, first of all, you get your trim notice, that's your preliminary notice, this is what we intend to assess your property. Then we have opportunities to go before the magistrate and the value adjustment board to have what you consider to be inappropriate issues with your assessment to be addressed. That is then determined. Once those determinations are completed, the tax roll is certified and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. Once that happens, you have sixty days from that date in which to mount a challenge to the assessment, and that is done in the circuit court, and no matter what your, your taxes are, you gotta pay those taxes before you even have standing to bring the assessment. Okay, that's the way ad valorem taxes go. And after that sixty days, you're, too bad, you cannot contest it for any reason. So, so the issue here was, well, we, we had somebody who, we had a resolution, we had budget hearings, we, we adopted, uh, the resolution, we adopted the assessment rate, and then, uh, following the receipt of notice of assessment, a landowner came to the, to the district, and it came before the board that they felt their assessment was inappropriate, because historically, for several years, they had been assessed on the basis of a single lot, and not on the basis of a lot and a half. Now, and I want to bring your attention to a very important part here, and that is, no matter what rate we adopted at the board hearing, uh, as applied to this landowner, this landowner's complaint is not about the rate, the landowner's complaint was about the, the, the number of lots he was assessed, okay? So that really, that was the basis of that complaint. And the issue is, when can the landowner complain about that? And so, in this particular case, the landowner had no knowledge that, no matter what the rate adopted was at the board hearings, that it would be applied to hit them as a lot and a half instead of a single lot. That is really the bottom line. When they got the tax bill, that was the first time this landowner was aware that it was a lot and halves instead of a single lot. Came to the board to complain about that, the board resolved it in favor of the landowner. So, the question is, when, when does this assessment become final, and, and how long do they have to challenge, and what is the appropriate way to challenge, et cetera, et cetera? So, in, in my opinion, this, this particular issue has brought up, surfaced a lot of problems I think we have in the district, because while, while the sixty day rule would arguably apply, in my opinion, again, that's a great argument for application to, uh, some, some assessment that, that, uh, might go in the tax roll, but this is not a tax roll assessment, this is district's assessment. So, when, when does it become final, and, and what opportunity does the landowner have to challenge? What we never do here is give preliminary assessments to the property owners, and we don't have an opportunity to challenge in place, no procedure for that. Uh, all we have is, here's your bill, pay it. You know, we go through the adoption process to the budget, I agree, and they have a meaningful opportunity to participate in the budget process, I agree, but what, as, as relates to this landowner in particular, that this landowner had no way of knowing that the assessment was going to be a lot and a half instead of a lot, based on all prior years. Had there been some preliminary notice issue, they could have received it, and then made the appropriate challenge by whatever procedure the board had in effect or adopts, and proceed from there. So, the issue, uh, then is, okay, regarding the finality of assessment, what is that at the district, and where is that? And the answer is unknown, because, uh, we are not really truly governed by the ad valorem assessments, and, uh, we have no actual procedures in place independently for that. So, I'll lay that out for you and, and let you address that from here.
Okay, one thing, uh, uh, about this, you keep, I wanna, I wanna remind everybody with this, that this particular landowner that you're talking about had paid for a lot and a half prior to giving, giving relief, unofficial relief from somebody at one point in time.
I completely agree with that, sir, that's correct.
Okay, but, you know, there's a policy-
Dave, I'm gonna have to challenge you, it was not unofficial, it was enacted by a district official, so, so let's, you keep going back to that.
And, you know, we can argue at this point, you know, was, he had no authority to do that, and John McClure said that, right, John?
A little bit after the fact. I did say that, yes. I'll continue to say that, in terms of actual authority.
Right. There is a policy, D one thousand and nine, in the, in a, uh, policy manual that, uh, that establishes, and maybe that's where we're getting to. Board of Supervisors shall establish written procedures for appeals of property owners and their maintenance assessments. Is this, is that where we're getting at here? Because it's in the policy manual, rewritten, when the policy manual was rewritten.
Shall establish procedures, yes, but-
And there is no, there's no background, there is no background to this D one thousand and nine?
That's correct.
Okay.
There are no procedures.
Well, I was gonna ask about it, because, uh, you know, I've, I've run across this in the policy manual, but there is no background.
That's, that's right. And, and that's my whole point, back to you, is we need those procedures.
But let me ask you, well, let me ask you one more question, and, uh, we, we certified our, our assessment roll probably very late in September, okay? And shortly after that happens, uh, the assessment, uh, bills go out about the first week in October, right?
November.
Or November? September? That would still give, I'm trying to get away from a second mailing on this thing, as far as, uh, as mailing everybody a, uh, a notification of what their assessments are gonna be, when they would have thirty, at least thirty days from when they get the billing to, to appeal. I, I don't know. I, I, that should be, should be ample time for somebody to appeal it, I would think. We, we put it in a newspaper. They can participate in a budget hearing, at the public hearing, but, I mean, if we have to do a second mailing, we'll do a second mailing, but, uh, like the county does, but the county, the county always has, this is what it's gonna be if nothing changes, and this is what it's gonna be if it does change, and, and the county pretty much knows, based upon, I guess, the state's pretty much driving some of that into, John, as far as what they have to, have to tax, or-
All of that is statutory, in the county.
So, that's, that's my only, my only, uh, you know, the sixty day window can be after the bill comes out, uh, as far as that's concerned, we could establish that procedure too, but, uh, I'm, I, I just don't think, uh, think it warrants a second mailing, in my opinion.
The procedures could be drafted in such a way that there could be a challenge after you receive the bill, so that's only a single mailing, and whoever desires the challenge could bring the challenge, and it could be resolved by, but there, I'm just saying, we have no, what I consider due process procedures in place for, uh, contesting things, for how, what is our procedures? Very clearly set forth in the statutes regarding the ad valorem taxes, and it gives everybody plenty of notice, opportunity to challenge, and finality, uh, after which time no challenges can be brought.
Is it, is it your idea that, uh, the appeal comes to the board?
I didn't say that at all.
No, I'm just asking you.
Well, I believe, at least, there has been some historical perspective of establishing some review committee, that the, the landowner could come before.
I would certainly hope that that would be the case. I mean, uh, we can't sit here and be a Board of Appeals for everything that goes on in this district. So, I'd be in favor of that if we would establish an interim, interim, uh, committee or body, whatever you want to call it, to, to address this appeal situation.
And that's the purpose of the value adjustment board, to, to, uh, hear such appeals prior to a certification role. And you could utilize a special magistrate if you- And you could utilize a special magistrate if you prefer. We did discuss at one meeting, I believe, the concerns about that because of the uniqueness of the district assessments and the way they apply.
I'd rather keep it within the district rather than have an outside source. Gentlemen, do you have comments?
Well, then, could I respectfully ask this, sir? Would the board like for us to work with staff and come up with some procedure to present to you, and then you can tweak it however you want to?
Very definitely. And I would hope that you would include whatever you want to call it, an interim appeal body.
Yes, sir.
Is that fair enough?
Yes.
David?
Okay.
Okay.
Will do.
All right. That was easier than I thought. Public Works Maintenance Yard update. Is that Greg?
Well, we're going to let, it's a combination of folks. We're going to let Mr. Howerton take the lead. Basically copies of what you're going to see on the screen. No, Gator needs a mic. Greg, Gator needs a mic. Okay.
Hi, good morning. Yes, this is Mr. Griffin. He's been under the weather a little bit. I'll get to do all the talking here for him. And I'll stand over here by this screen so I can kind of do my Van and White impression, although I apologize, I'm not quite as pretty.
Gator, identify yourself.
Okay, yes. Clinton Howerton, Polston Engineering. Otherwise known as Gator sometimes. All right. What we want to talk about today is just give you a little bit of an frog project update, something we've been working on. This ties in with the whole Eastern Basin project in that this maintenance yard there behind the staff building, the town hall building, that lies within the Eastern Basin. And when we want to go in there and want to pave that to try to eliminate a lot of problems that we have out there, and that, of course, is going to cause an impact to the retention ponds, adding that much impervious surface to the basin. So we included that in the Eastern Basin. When Water Management District seen that, they want to see detailed improvement plans on this as part of that Eastern Basin modification. So that's kind of kicked this project into a little more of a high gear. I had to get this finished before I can send my response back to the Water Management District on a couple of questions that they asked for on the Eastern Basin submittal that I submitted back in October. So the project we're talking about located, if most of you are probably familiar with, but it's at the downhill side of the driving range, right in line with all the golf balls and where everybody likes to, not main targets. The water plant's located out there. We also have the golf maintenance facilities are located out there. And the public works, tractors, everything, that's where they store their equipment, where they do all their maintenance work and everything. The access right now currently goes along the side of the driving range, goes behind the foam building to go back and curl back up in there. I'll go to the next slide. When first asked to look at this and to do that, and just want to go in there and try to pave it, try to solve some of the problems, one of the first things that I kind of got to looking is, when we start working on the design, we look at the type of soil. This is a satellite soil. If you remember, some of our last, time I was up here in front of you, we talked about some of the soil types, some of the challenges that we face in the district. This being a hydrologic group C, which means it's not a very well-drained soil. The typical seasonal water table depth on these, on this type of soil is one to three and a half foot. On this particular side, I'm estimating it around 18 inches below the ground level is where the water table would come up to on this. Somewhat dry, but it's not very dry. There's not a whole lot of room for the water to go. Also got the little, when I started pulling in, and got the surveyors to do the survey and elevations on this thing, the building there, the existing barn building, is only less than a foot above the top of the pond that we're trying to drain all this water to, being SMF-3 across the road on the other side of Columbus. Also started looking into where are existing utilities, such as, we've got several water lines. We've got our water plants right there. This is the main artery coming out of our water plant, coming out to serve the whole district. I need to know where that's at. I also know I have a line coming in somewhere along that area that was put in back on the original lines when the water plant was originally done, from the well that's on the other side of the lake over here. It comes in through this barn area. I'll go to the next slide. One of the main things we wanted to address was basically a flooding issue. Over the years, they've went out there and, yes, we've added some shell, we've added some rock here, there, added some fill, tried to make this thing not be a sand bed, because it gets a lot of traffic coming in and out. Well, and when we've done all this, all these lakes appear every time that it rains. And you'll see on that slide, and everyone here can see, that we have great big lakes. I kind of affectionately call it Lake George, after our maintenance guy. Next slide. This is another one shown here in front of the Public Works building. And this is the main entrance going into that building. What you don't, you see the water stacked up there, but what you don't realize is, is that hole is about 12 inches deep at times, because we have so much traffic going through there. When water stands and that ground gets wet, it gets soft. The kind of traffic that we have coming and going in and out of this yard, of this facility, it just beats a hole in the ground, and it just gets deeper and deeper every time it rains. Next slide. Another example, I mean, just showing the water. Water just stands, it's everywhere. It basically turns into a mud pit. Next slide. Another example, the same thing, just showing water, there's just nowhere for it to go. This is in front of the golf building, the existing golf maintenance building. This is Dave Bell's office. It's, I guess you'd call it an office, it's a trailer. That's all it really is. And he has walked through mud to get in and out of it every time that it rains. Same thing with, in front of the maintenance building for the golf operations. Right in front of their door stands several feet, or several inches deep. And so everything coming in and out, you're walking through mud. Next slide. Another picture of, this is what it looks like today. It's dried out a little bit, but this is what it looks like. This is the golf operations, or their maintenance office. Next slide. This is a picture of the existing building that they're trying to work all their maintenance out of in here. It's not a very large building. It's getting rather old. You can, and it's hard to tell on some of these pictures, but the roof is not even straight. It's waving a little bit. I know there's several leaks in it. Go to the next slide. That's a picture of what they're trying to work out of, trying to maintain all the golf equipment and even a lot of the public works equipment. This little room is not any larger than most of your garages that you have at home. And that's what they're trying to work on all this equipment with. This also shows, the next picture shows a picture of the roof, and you can see the leaks in there and the mold that's occurring in there. Every time it rains, we have water leaking in, pouring in on the equipment that's in there. They have some expensive maintenance equipment, they work with mechanics equipment, and we have water leaking in on it, that's about every time it rains. This is the backside, they're trying to work, they're doing the best they can with what they have, but this is just a picture of what they're trying to work with. And they're trying to put a little roof over things where they can try to work in all weather, but in our kind of climate, this is just not, not working very well for them. This is a picture of one of the, some of the existing little buildings out there that we're proposing to remove, the bathroom facility, pretty much the break room for the thing. It's about to fall down, a good wind probably would fall down, and they're telling how many critters it might kill when it does that. Next slide. This also, we got several little storage sheds dotted around the place out there. We're proposing to get rid of those with the part of the projects. This is another one. This is where George works out of, and it's also kind of a storage for utilities and for the public works. Okay, next slide. Another thing, another issue that we have there, and this has been kind of a ticking time bomb, if you will. Our gas and diesel pumps are right there in this facility. So everything that works, that runs out here in the district, all has to come through here, get their gas, get their diesel. Y'all, everyone here, I'm sure, has pumped gas nowadays. You'll know whenever you do that, you look around the gas station, there's always fuel on the ground. It's not really clean concrete around the gas pumps. Well, we don't have concrete in front of our gas pumps. All we have is ground to soak up the gas that leaks. Anything that spilled and flows over goes in. If you notice in this picture, and in the next one, go ahead and go to the next one. Notice the proximity, what's right behind it. That's our water plant. Those fuel pumps are about as close to our wells as we could possibly get them. Not a very good place for them. It's not even legally supposed to be there. We should have them at least a minimum of 200 feet from the wellheads supplying public drinking water. Here's another example of the existing buildings that's out there. These are the Public Works building. The barn has withstood several hurricanes and actually came out fairly well, did receive some damage, but for the most part, it's in pretty good shape. There's nothing really wrong. We want to go ahead and try to keep it, try to use this building. Houses, all of our tractors. And this is the entrance going into it, where everybody's coming and going. We can keep this building. Next slide. This is, again, but just showing the problems that we have with the drainage in front of it, just a repeat of an earlier slide. We also have the, where the golf equipment is stored underneath there. This is, we're showing where they all park, basically their garage. It's the same type of building. And again, that building's fine. We want to go ahead and keep that building, that pole barn building. But, and then, okay, here we've also got, right in the middle of the yard, we have our bulk storage yard. So the basic layout that we've come up with shows here in the blue, or somewhat purple, but kind of a blue area, it shows the area that we'd like to pave. We're trying to work on as much of a shoestring budget as we can on this, but also at the same time, we're also trying to get the level of functionality that they need for this site, because this is a working site. All the guys out there work very hard, and there's a lot of traffic coming in and out. There's also a lot of deliveries come in. We got semis coming in on a daily basis. We have dump trucks coming in, bringing materials. Yes, sir.
Gator, you, excuse me for interrupting, but you referred to a shoestring budget. Do you want to clarify that?
We've allocated $380,000 for the project at this point.
Well, I hope we're not addressing a project that we're going to be sorry that we didn't do a more complete job later on.
Well, what we're doing is, we want to discuss that with the board today, if we can get to the end here.
Yeah, I'll let you address that at the end, if you would. I'll show you what we want to do. And then I guess that's up to the board, that's up to the staff and the board.
Well, that jumped out at me.
Right. Okay. Well, what I'm saying is, I'm trying to do it as cheaply, I guess, or as physically responsibly as possible here, that we can. And I'll get, I'm fixing to address a few of those issues. What we have here, about as much paved area as I believe your budget will possibly allow, but as little as I think we can get by with and still try to work. Okay, next slide. Several options that I went through, and I've tried several different options on this site. This one has not been as easy as it might would seem. It would seem easy, just go out there and just pave what's there and add asphalt to it. And that's what we were originally hoping we could do. One of the layouts I was looking at is the district owns these two lots right here that are just past the foam building. They own, they had the foam building, and the district owns two lots. And there's two lots that the district does not own that are private ownership, and then two more, actually three more lots that the district does own. On this particular slide, disregard this, I have a little building up, just a temporary for a different layout use. But one thing that I was, you can go back to it, sorry. One thing I was looking at trying to do was trying to go through this site, because one other thing I found out when we done the topographic research on this, this site is flat. Not only do we not have much fall from these buildings to this lake over here that we have to get the water to, but the whole site, there is no fall. It's almost the same elevation around the whole entire thing. And problem is, is stuff likes to flow downhill, but we do not have a downhill to flow to. I tried to go in and put in a series of pipes and culverts. It was kind of, it might work, kind of a deal. I was not comfortable with the design on that, but it was the best way I could make it happen. But you see the amount of pipe and the amount of inlets that would be required to even have a chance of making it work. The cost was just, it was going out, it was going, it was getting too high. I was getting too concerned that the cost would overrun the budget. We also tried looking at moving the driveway down here across from the lake, try to keep it where it's at. Problem is, we're just losing a lot of our site in the functionality. We can't fit everything we need to fit within that boundary. If you can go to the next slide. So what we came up with is, after about third or fourth version of this, was this layout that we're currently working with. What we have here, I've got the driveway coming in on some lots that the district owns. We're not going to clear any more than we absolutely have to. We're going to try to use the existing vegetation as a shield to keep this from the road, so that pretty much no one really knows what's going on back there as it is. We want to try to keep it that way. And, but we also, we got as much asphalt as we can here. I've got a perimeter, little swale going around the hole outside of it, trying to collect the water. Again, it's flat. It's not like the water from over here on the, around by the water tank, would have to go all the way around to come all the way back around to flow all the way back to this corner. But there's no fall. There's absolutely no fall. It's flat. So what's going, essentially would be a long retention pond, but it's something that I think will be okay. But there's just not a lot of fall in that. Want to work with it. As far as the onsite stuff, we tried several options, even putting a collection inlet in there and pumping it, but the amount of area coming to it, the pump size would have to be quite large to keep anything from flooding. That was, that option just priced itself out of possibility, out of feasibility. And what we're working on right now, we want to try to drain all this whole area, drain it down through an inverted swale. It'll be kind of steep coming down through here, but if I can keep it above that 18-inch water table, so we don't have water table issues, then we'll try to let the water come over. We'll build a little settling pond in here to let any runoff, because we will have shell, we have a lot of stuff coming in on the tires, on these type of vehicles and whatnot. We want all that stuff to settle out, and then we can let that water then come out of that pond, and it can overflow and go out into the lake. We don't want, I call it a lake, it's a retention pond, but we're treating it like a lake. We're trying to treat the water before it goes in there. Several things that show up on here, you see, these are the water lines that I was talking about and the well line coming in. I can't cross that with the stormwater drainage pipes. And so I'm pretty much kind of limited, it's almost like a block wall. I can't go underground and cross those. And that's a lot of what eliminated that other layout that we had, was I can't get water subsurface across here, because I have too many utility conflicts with the power, which is somewhat, some of it's overhead, some of it's under. I've got the water lines, the well lines, several other utilities coming in, going through there.
Speak to the elevation on Columbus and the issues you had there.
Okay. Yeah. On Columbus Boulevard, and some of you may remember, some who've been around for a while may remember, that back in, I want to say it was around 98 or so, it might even have been around 2000, I worked on a project, and one of the thing was, part of the project was to address the flooding on Columbus Boulevard. Columbus Boulevard used to go underwater every time we had a heavy rain. What we ended up doing is, we started back, I believe it was at Woods and Iron, and we came all the way to, almost to the district, or to Cremona, I believe. We raised the road. That road has been raised, it's been rebuilt in that whole area. And this area where we're crossing, where we're talking about crossing right here, when they put the, there's one, there's a culvert going underneath the road. That culvert, when they put the culvert in, was basically at the existing road elevation. So the bottom of the culvert is where the old road is, or was there. And we had to build the road up that much to keep it from flooding. We haven't had a problem with Columbus in that section since. You know, we've still got other little issues we know that pop up, but that section at least was rectified when we done all that. But that's just an example of some of the water table issues that we're fighting in there. But the problem is, is that our maintenance yard and the buildings are not much above that. They're, in fact, I think, the building is almost the same elevation as the road here. But the water used to come up that highway routinely. So we are dealing with a water table issue there, like other people are in other parts of the district. We have to deal with it as well. And then trying to make the best of that situation on trying to incorporate all of this. If we can go to the next slide. Go to the next. All right. So basically what we're showing here is the proposed paved areas. Go to the next slide. Another thing that we're talking about doing as part of this project, this is where the cost kind of comes in a little bit. This is where we're going to be bumping on that 300 or more. This is where some of this is coming in. Over here, where we have shown, is a little building proposed, and Greg might can give more detail on what the intent of this is, but it's basically a chemical mix station so we can have somewhere safe to mix up our chemicals and to, that we use on, they use on a routine basis, daily. And this also would, I mean, you have the water supply there to add that in there, also have a catchment if you spill any, so that it doesn't go in the groundwater, or things like that. more detail on what the intent of this is, but it's basically a chemical mix station so we can have somewhere safe to mix up our chemicals and to...that we use on a...they use on a routine basis, daily. And this also would...I mean, you had the water supply there to add that in there, also have a catchment if you spill any so that it doesn't go in the groundwater, or things like that. Give us an area to wash the equipment that comes in. We have a lot of equipment dealing with fertilizers, pesticides, doing a lot of things like that, a lot of mowing equipment. They all need to be washed, need to be maintained. Where are we going to wash all this stuff? Well, right now, it's currently being washed and it just flows over into a little hole in the ground out there in the middle of the yard. So it just gives an area, one of these facilities is pretty much, I believe, needs to be mandated. I think it's mandated, isn't it? And that you need to have one of these things here to capture all this stuff. It recycles the water, treats the water, it washes everything, cleans the water up, uses a lot less water also. Next slide. Also, we want to move our fuel facility over here. Get it as far away from our wells down here on this corner as we possibly can. This will also have a catchment and containment system on there that if we do spill fuel and such as that, that it would be contained. But still, we want to try to get it far away from our wells as we possibly can. Okay, next slide. An example of what one of these buildings would look like, here's one that was recently built. Our...what we're talking about doing here, we would actually move these, some of these columns, move them further back so you have more of an open area for the equipment to pull in. But we would have fuel tanks set up there, a wash area, and then we have a chemical storage.
Let me...just briefly, there are a few things that these systems do. This particular system has three components to it. The nearest picture shows two fuel tanks. Those are 525-gallon fuel tanks. With that size tank, you A, do not have to have permits for it and are not subject to inspection because they're double-wall tank. It also takes away the need for containment. The second thing that this system does is, and you can't see it in this particular picture, but in front of the fueling area where the fueling pad is, there's actually a grate in the ground. Should both of those tanks rupture in some unforeseen condition, the system that's in place has the ability to neutralize both the gasoline and diesel fuel into basically inert liquids that can be simply removed and hauled off or simply processed. So it takes what we have now, if we had a 500...we currently have a closed containment system. Basically, there's a concrete cell around what we've got. If we had a spill that caused some type of a fracture or crack, you would end up excavating every ounce of soil below that until you got an absolutely clean return. It's just an incredibly costly experience. And in addition, with the proximity to the current wells, it could lead to a tremendous headache. The...go ahead and go to the next picture, Tanya. The center part of this, which is behind the center beam, is the actual recycling center and also the wash pad. When equipment comes off, not only the golf courses, but when our mowers come off, whether they're mowing, the big mowers, the bat wings out back, or the turf mowers that we use to mow the Boulevard, when they come in, they'll get washed down. All the grass clippings, everything that comes off of those mowers goes down into that actual grate and gets processed and recycled. The trimmings get separated and it creates a nice, a nice clean environment. Where that's important, and Dave Bell can speak to this if he'd like, but from my side of the world, in terms of the environmental side, the vast majority of disease and pests that we have in the district in terms of ligotium, Brazilian pepper, we are the...we are our worst enemy because they get transported on the decks of our mowers, on the blades, on the tires, and they travel. We spread them everywhere we go because we don't have a current wash pad. We don't have a mechanism to wash them down. And I think David would tell you the same thing with regards to, you know, disease on the golf course. That is one other item that we're going to do. And in the final, the building to the right, which is a little aluminum building that's elevated in that picture, is a...that's a chemical storage building. Currently, we've got our chemicals stored in two...they're basically stored on the floors of our barns. If we had any type of a rupture or failure, we would have a chemical spill that we'd be required to clean up. Again, to clean up, you have to excavate all the soils around it to the point where you have a clean return. It can get very costly. And most of the time, when you have that type of a cleanup, those things need to go to a hazardous waste landfill, which is also incredibly expensive. This system is built to handle the capacity of the entire amount of chemicals that's stored in there. And we have in excess, between mosquito control, the amount of bulk storage we have, I would say we have in excess of about 750 to 1,000 gallons of active chemical onsite every day. In addition to that, we've got currently two 1,000-gallon tanks. One is 1,000 gallons of diesel, one's 1,000 gallons of gasoline. So this system would be able to handle and mitigate any spill, even if we had a catastrophic event. It's basically protecting the watershed around us and also protecting our drinking water supplies.
All right. The next item that we're talking about doing also is a new maintenance building. This would replace the building that was there I showed you with the roof falling in. This maintenance building would be about 4,200 square feet total. The first, well, about 1,400 square feet of it would be an office building that would give George Lloyd, David Bell, several group...they would have an office space in there in an actual real building rather than a trailer. And there will also be a break room, bathrooms, which we need out there for this facility, for everyone there to use. Another part of it would be two large maintenance bays. This would serve both Public Works and the golf course. They would be...they could have their lifts in there, their racks in there. They can store all their tools, keep all their equipment out of the weather, give them much greater capabilities of maintaining and working on the equipment that we've had. And we've got some great equipment out there. They just need a way to be able to maintain and work on this. An example of what that building would look like, this is one that was built recently. And this is pretty much exactly what that building was patterned after, about the same height, about a 20-foot eve height or so. And that would give enough room so that over top of the offices, you can have some storage over top there for small parts and other equipment and whatnot. On the particular case that we're talking about doing, we would have entrance bays on the side here. We'd have large doors, roll-up doors on the sides, on both sides so they can pull equipment through. Okay, next slide. On this one, I'm just kind of pointing out the areas that we're wanting to keep. We're wanting to keep the large pole barns that we already have, the two of them there. Those would remain. Those were for parking the tractors and equipment under. We'd keep our bulk storage area, just where it's at. Water plant, of course, would stay, everything where it's at. Okay, next slide. One other thing that we would be required to do that also was not really anticipated in original thoughts and estimates when trying to prepare a budget for some of this, is the county is going to require that we have to do a site plan, a site improvement plan for some of this. Part of that, in order to comply with the LDRs, we're going to do a landscaping plan. As part of the landscaping plan, even though we have a large amount of scrub basically on those lots, but the lots that are adjacent to us that we do not own, we're going to have to do a landscape buffer, going to require trees, going to require shrubs, done on that. We'll also be required to do an interior landscaping plan. The county has already talked with us and is agreeable to waiving some of that interior landscaping requirements, or at least let us kind of transfer some of it so we don't have to plant trees and shrubs all through the middle of this thing. But we'll put them around the outside of them, which where we want to put them anyway, to try to shield it from the golf course as well. But what that's going to also require is, the current LDRs were passed and they require a landscape architect to sign and seal the irrigation and landscaping plan. Engineers cannot do that anymore. So therefore, we're going to hire a landscape architect to come in and cover the landscaping and irrigation parts of it. It just costs a few more dollars, but it's something that we're going to have to do. We can't really avoid. That's going to be something in order to comply with the county. You have a question, Dave?
That's state law, isn't it?
Yeah, I believe that's their interpretation on state law.
Gator, a couple things. Frankly, it seems like this project is rather underfunded. Is that correct?
Let me...
Well, I want to hear...I want to hear Gator's...
Let me see how much we have. We currently have, I believe, $380,000 set aside for this. We believe that is enough money to cover the building and to cover the equipment storage. The unknown, we don't know, is basically the horizontal work, the paving and drainage. We have, I think, $100,000 for that. That may or may not be enough. Plus, we have probably an additional, what, 10 or 15 grand in landscaping?
Probably in that neighborhood at least, yes, sir.
We're looking at bidding this kind of a la carte. Go ahead, Greg. Talk about that.
Sure. What we would do, kind of as an economy of scale approach, since this is all going to be packaged together and site work is site work, whether it's on the north entrance or in the maintenance yard, we're going to put together a single bid pack that addresses...
Wait a minute. Why the north entrance and the maintenance yard?
Again, they're both site work oriented. The...and what we're...
Two separate projects, right?
They are. They are two separate projects.
Well, let's concentrate on this, okay? Because several things that you guys pointed out bothered me. When it was presented to the board, I don't believe the board has ever, ever put some kind of a box on this funding-wise. And now we're struggling with this, we're struggling with that. Is this something we can phase?
Well, let me address this when you talk about struggling. I wouldn't say that we're struggling with it. We have skinned at least a half a dozen cats in the process of coming to a site plan that we felt would be fully functional. What we are doing now is providing you with an update as to what our footprint's going to be and what the possible complications may be from an economic scale. We have designed this as fiscally and economically conscious as we possibly could, with the highest insight being on, or the focus being on functionality. I don't see a dramatic change in terms of the overall budget. What we're working towards, and the reason I would pair this with the other project, is because it would be awarded to a single contractor or bid as an a la carte, as we discussed. We can pick and choose the best prices that best fit A, our time schedule, and B, our budget. The other mechanism or reason for doing this is as we do general contracts, we would function as a general contractor on this, we would pick and choose which individual components we would actually do. If something comes in that's so far out of budget, we choose not to do it, yes, we could avoid it. I wouldn't recommend skipping the site drainage. I think that's your foundation for the entire project. So...
Greg, look, we're trying to get a handle on this. And throughout Gator's presentation, which was good, by the way, Gator, and we thank you for that, it was just fraught with, "Well, maybe we can squeeze in that. Maybe we can do that. We've got this situation." Sounds to me like we're underfunded.
Well, I would give...
For example, let me refer to a comment that Greg made about tanks not being subject to inspection. Why wouldn't we want those subject to inspection? Why wouldn't we want full inspection? You're talking about a bunch of chemicals, fuel, and so forth.
You can choose to have those tanks inspected if you want. The reality is, is you've got so many safeguards in place that the state has deemed them acceptable to not be inspected.
Is that correct? Is that a size thing?
It has to do with the size. This, A, the size, and B, the mechanism. It's a double wall.
Does this size that you're recommending meet our requirements?
It does, yes. I've spoken with Dave Bell about it and with our weekly fuel.
My colleagues may have...I'm very uncomfortable with what we want to do and the money we have to do it.
Well, one of the things, we think we're comfortable with the major components. We want to put it out to bid, and then we can deal with the issues once we get actual numbers. Right now, we'd be estimating what it would come in at.
And one of the reasons, and this slide illustrates perfectly what I was talking about in terms of budget constraints. When we initially were working on budget for this, we were considering what would be a normal site drainage where you have an assumed level of slope that you can create what we would consider reasonable drainage. Here, we basically have a foot to work with over several hundred feet, less than a fraction of a percent in terms of total slope. When we look at this, because of the amount of cover, in other words, the amount of dirt we can put over the top of the pipe, it immediately took away our ability to use poly-pipe or polyurethane pipe and took us up to RCP, which is a rigid concrete pipe. The cost increase there is 30% or so per joint, per actual stick of pipe. These are the things that we've done away with. So instead of having what would have ultimately resulted in eight or nine catch basins at just the cost of the basin being $3,000 plus installation, say roughly $40,000 in installation costs, we went to surface drainage so that we could mitigate some of that. Now, instead of having it drained directly into the pond, we've had to build or design a second pond for it to go in. So what we wanted to illustrate to you was, yes, we may have some cost increases, and there's a likelihood that the site cost, the actual work of the paving and drainage will increase. But at the end of the day, we have worked through every possible scenario or every viable scenario that we've seen, from pumping to underground drainage to surface drainage. And we've arrived at the conclusion that this is the most viable option that we've seen.
You've outlined so many problems that I want to make sure that we address those problems. We got one crack at this. I mean, you can't...
Absolutely.
There's no phase. You can't do it in phases. Is that correct?
I wouldn't...again, if you want to pave the yard, that's fine. But when we start doing the paving, buildings are going to be coming out that are functional buildings that are currently in use.
So what are we paving? Nothing?
No, we're paving the entire yard. Everything that's in...
Good.
Go to the next slide, Tanya. Everything that's in blue is what's slated to be paved.
And the speckled white, red specks and the white.
Yeah. The white around the bins is actually concrete. And the reason we put concrete down in those areas is because when you have the heavy trucks that are carrying aggregate, sand, mulch, whatever it be, as they turn, if they're on asphalt, they'll eat up the asphalt. You put concrete down so that the tires from the trucks won't eat...they won't eat up the concrete.
You're going to bid everything we need to have done. So...you know better than that. So there's no question about that we will address these problems.
Correct.
And this project will correct these problems.
Correct.
Give us a facility that we can all be proud of. Is that correct?
What we're making every effort to do is find every problem that we can find and address it ahead of time so that when we go to bid, we're asking for a firm fixed price as opposed to a time and materials type of approach. And with that firm fixed price, barring some unforeseen condition, we should be relative...we should be very, very close to the actual completion number. And that was...that's our ultimate goal in breaking this down piece by piece.
Yeah, I got one thing. My...you know, our checkbook is still stinging from the tennis court issue where we tried to put lipstick on a pig. So my question really is, is this the best possible alternative? Forget about the price, but is this the best way to go?
I'll address it from my perspective, and then I'll let Gator address it. We looked at, again, various ways of addressing. The primary concern with this whole facility is what to do with rainfall, with drainage. Because we don't have slope, what do we...what's the most cost-effective yet functional?
Forget the cost-effective part.
You could go in and raise the site two feet.
We'd have to tear it...
You could take out every building in there.
Right.
And that would probably add a half a million bucks to your budget.
Okay.
We thought this would be, from a value engineering standpoint, a practical approach that would solve the problem, utilize what's still functional there, but also provide for some growth in the future. For example, the maintenance building is being constructed in such a way that if we grow to the point where we need to add another bay, we can do that. We think the maintenance yard is large enough to handle what we need. The pole barns appear to be adequate for us to store our equipment. So I think this is...this meets our needs. We've debated it internally a great deal. We've looked at alternatives on drainage. But short of raising the site, this appears to be a very practical approach.
Well, you mentioned adding a pump or something.
We looked at...when Gator was doing the calculations, and I'll let him step in on this, but we looked at the four-inch rainfalls, what they, four-inch an hour rainfalls, what we designed to in terms of the maximum storm potential. And this keeps our buildings from flooding. There was a 12-inch pump that we would be required.
At least a 12-inch discharge on it. It was going to be cost-prohibitive to use a pump, which is why they're not typically used for stormwater.
$100-plus thousand dollars.
How much?
$100-plus thousand dollars just for stormwater.
But 10 years from now, is that the better solution, or is that...
No. I believe surface drainage is the better solution for a couple of different reasons. You know, we talked about tractors coming in. We're going to clean them when they come in, but we're still going to have intrusion of dirt. If you have surface drainage, all you do is scrape it up, sweep it up, blow it off, and clean it up. You know, when we start dealing with pipes, because of the relative depth of the actual water table, A, we'd be dealing with a dewatering issue possible for the installation of said pipes, and also you're going to deal with standing water in those pipes, which do nothing more than create a mosquito haven. The flip side of that is, because of the top elevation of the pond, we would end up with such a basically large amount of static or of head required to actually push water out. If the pond's at peak, you're not going to get the discharge. It's going to be timely enough with regular...without water being pumped. I mean...
Do I stand corrected?
Uh-huh. Gator, you made the presentation, and listening to your presentation as you went through it, you had an awful lot of ifs or whats and so forth. Are you comfortable that this is going to, as presented, this project is going to address and solve all situations out there? Because as Kurt says, you know, let's get this thing sized right. If it's more money, then... thing sized right. If it's more money, then we'll address that issue. But you don't sound very comfortable that, that these solutions are going to, are going to work the way we want them to.
Well, to be honest with you, there's no real good way to do this. Uh, there really isn't. And I have spent a, a lot of time pulling my hair out, and I went home frustrated many nights. Uh, my wife had to deal with that. But trying to come up with what, what can we do for this? It's just so flat. There's nowhere for the water to go. We've painted ourselves into, into a corner. Realistically, if money were not, were, were no object, assuming that it was a perfect world and we had an unlimited bank account, yes, I would take those existing buildings down. I would wipe the whole site clean, and I would raise the whole thing up and start again at about a foot and a half to two feet higher than what it is. Unfortunately, we don't have unlimited budgets, and I know that. I mean, it's just being realistic. Am I comfortable with the site? This is about as comfortable as I can get with it, but I'm not comfortable with it as I typically am most designs that I'd come for.
From what, what aspect? The drainage?
Just from a drainage aspect. I mean, we're, we're on minimum or a little bit below what I usually use for a minimum slope on the asphalt. Uh, what that means is, is that, I mean, they can put it in. And I've even talked with, uh, with you, with some contractors, site contractors and paving contractors. Guys, this is what I'm trying to do here. This is what I'm working with. Are you comfortable with putting this in? And they're kind of scratching their head. We can put it in, but we're going to have bird baths. They can't, I can grade it out to a laser straight line for a grade and have a point two five percent on it and, and, and require all that. But the reality is, they can't construct it that way. Uh, and it won't stay that way. I mean, and so I try to keep about a one percent slope for a minimum, uh, on some of these things.
Gator, explain bird baths and the fact we may have some standing water after heavy rainfalls, but we're not going to have a foot or six inches.
Right. That's what I was about to say. That we, with these minimum slopes, we're going to have a little bit of a bird bath. It's going to be two or three inches deep for a much smaller area, and it's going to be under, on asphalt. So it's not going to get deeper. It's not going to be a mud hole like what they have out there now.
Well, let me just say that I, I still have kind of a sour taste in my mouth from the clubhouse, because that project was presented by, by General Manager Bygott. He was going to stay in budget no matter what happens, et cetera, et cetera. We spent six months correcting things in that. I don't want to spend six months correcting things here. So if, if we got it all out on the table, all well and good, but if there's, there's areas that you might want to amend something, um, do what you need to do.
Well, the only, the only other thing to do, if you want to do the site absolutely right, as Gator said, raise it the foot and a half, you're going to end up tearing, tearing out two roughly 8,000 square foot apiece pole barns. If you give me a blank slate, yeah, we can create the ideal project that's, that's perfectly capable, uh, and we can still do it in a, in a relatively cost effective manner. Is it going to be a cost increase? Yeah, as Michael said, you're 250 to 500,000 dollars, because now you're adding another 16 to 20,000 square feet of, of storage. I'd consolidate it into one building and have all the, have all the equipment into one large building.
How about the water tanks, if you, if you raise the elevation? Would they have to be dismantled?
No. The water tank, the water tanks are sealed, so it wouldn't impact the, the water plant at all. And with the, with the appropriate floor elevation of the buildings, we would then go to underground to a large degree in terms, in terms of drainage. It would change, it would change our, our scope dramatically.
Okay. I, I suppose, I, I, when you start with this, I'm not comfortable with this, I'm not comfortable with that. There, there's not an alternate site. Could we leave the, I mean, I thought about, I pretty much know the district, there's not an alternate site for this that would be high and dry. Leave the water plant where it is and move the whole maintenance operation.
I think the, the issue with that is that...
I don't think there's a place.
There are certainly sites that we could use for alternates for public works. The issue would be golf operations, and it's unfortunately the central site for golf operations, and we really don't have another viable site for that.
Well, and, yeah, logistics, zoning, uh, location, all those issues would come into play.
Did we, did we shoot ourselves in the foot when we closed, when we filled in that water, that water retention area to the left side of number 10 green? Was that, was that catching any of that?
Uh, oh, the, it was kind of like a dump area or something that was out there?
Between 18, which is nine fairway now, and number 10 green, there was a water retention area.
It's to the left of that green.
And we filled that in. Was that catching any of that?
I don't think it really affected much on this. Not really, no, sir.
The vast, the vast majority of the water that's in the yard now, and the reason we, we end up with the standing water, is because the, you're basically at the top of the plateau there, and there is no clearly defined drainage. It just sits there until it perks into the ground or evaporates.
Okay. Uh, number one, I'd like to keep the projects separate. I don't want to, let's don't, let's don't...
Combine.
Combine them. Let's keep them separate, so we know where we're at. Okay, as far as getting a contractor. Another, another thing is, uh, I think I've had my fill of us service, serving as a general contractor. We want that responsibility on the contractor, not on one of our people. And I, and people, he shouldn't have the time to do it anyway, I don't think. We need to, we need to contract this out, have the responsibility, the general contractor responsibility in somebody else's hands. And you know what? I think we ought to get a price on, re, replatinate that thing and bring that, bring the elevation up where it belongs. Now we don't have all these question marks. I'd like, I'd like to see that number before we make a determination what, what, what we do.
If I can interject while you're at that point and start interrupting you, there is one caveat with this whole design. We can't finalize our permitting for the north end drainage project until we submit a, a final plan for this yard. So if you want to go back and redesign, it's not like we can redesign it, turn it into the water management district. We can make a mod down the road, make a permit modification, but when they expect, when we turn this in, they're going to expect that to be a final piece of work.
Well, let's make it final, and then let's do it right.
I mean, I can ask for an extension and just get it, it's delayed that, it's delaying the eastern basin, but as long as you understand that, that that's, if that's successful, that's okay. I mean, we can, I can work with that. I can...
Why don't you let Mr. Howerton estimate the cost of raising that site two feet, or 18 inches, plus the buildings, rather than bidding it that way or redesigning it that way?
I would think he should be getting, getting pretty close, as long as you...
I think you're going to find a pretty large number.
Put some kind of safety factor into it. I don't know. I can't...
Pretty large number. And I'm not sure you're going to accomplish much other than getting rid of some bird baths, uh, and that type thing in the lot.
But what are these buildings in that upper right-hand corner?
The, the two small buildings, or three small buildings in the upper right-hand corner, one is currently used is George Lloyd's office, who is our director of roads.
Okay.
And the other two are used exclusively for storage.
It's kind of like buildings you'd buy at Home Depot.
Okay.
Little, little storage sheds.
Now, the ones along Columbus Boulevard, those three, four lots, which ones do we own?
Okay. Where my, can you see where my hand's at? We own these two right here.
Yeah.
Uh, then there's two that, that are directly behind this other building. There, they're privately owned.
And current in terms of their investments.
Yeah, right. And then the next three, from the intersection down, those three, which is a small corner lot up there, that the district owns all three of those.
Okay.
So from the intersection, uh, two, but not including the phone building, there are two of them that are privately owned. The rest of them are district owned.
Ideally. The ideal place to put our entrance would be on the two lots that are owned by private parties. I mean, the ideal thing to do would be to acquire those two lots, and, and that would make the situation a whole, a whole lot cleaner, because then we have direct drainage into the pond. It, it cleans up the whole yard substantially.
Could, could we discuss with those homeowners to possibly do a property switch with them? Mike?
Uh, we can approach them and see what they'll be willing to do. I know when we...
The reason, the reason I'm saying that is there's a possibility then that you could take this whole yard and move it halfway up those lots towards Columbus, and work that whole area so that you could use, get half of the, the yard done, and then work the back half of the yard.
Well, we could do a lot more with it if we had the, if we had, you know, that...
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. I'm not sure it'd help us that much from a drainage standpoint without raising the site, because it's still flat.
Well, you still raise the site, but you have a, you have a, a nice buffer zone there.
Yeah, we, we can approach those two property owners. I, I don't remember their names, but I, I seem to remember. They're out of county. I think they're South Florida residents.
Maybe we can...
Two separate owners?
I believe so.
Yes.
Maybe we can talk to them and see if we can do a property swap with them.
Uh...
Or just buy them outright. Most definitely buy them.
Yeah, they're, they're fairly, there's some fairly high debt on those lots, if I remember right, but we can approach them, see what they say.
Cheaper alternative than the other.
We'll approach.
I, I just, it's just a thought, you know?
All right, let us, all right. There's the issue we're dealing with. So if I understand your direction, what we'll do is we'll ask Mr. Howerton to go in and do a rough estimate to basically raise the site and replace all the structures, because that's what you're talking about.
Right.
And, uh, we'll also approach the adjacent property owners of the two lots we don't own to discuss acquisition and/or swapping of properties that we may own that may be of interest to them. When they realize there's going to be a public works facility behind them, they may or may not be interested in retaining them.
Right.
And then we'll report back to the board at the next available meeting.
Good.
Good.
That would be good.
Got all that?
I guess when Gator gets comfortable, I get comfortable.
How big is that site, Gator? Two acres?
Uh, it's about three acres, actually.
Three acres?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we have no add-ons, no petitions and communications, staff reports. Um, first one to hear from Golf. David, you may want to review your, uh, your email to all of us on memberships and so forth. One, one little quirk, um, you asked all the people, but, uh, those aren't memberships. Those are two to three are summer for membership. So what is the bottom line regarding new memberships?
Those memberships, um, David Ford, Sun and Lake Golf Club, uh, those memberships that are listed, if you look, a lot of those are seasonal. Seasonals are considered, are single memberships, so it's not a family. So those are all, um, those are 34, um, new members, uh, from a membership standpoint. I understand what you're saying now. Um, you know, we're going to be in 26 to 27 new memberships for the year.
Yeah, we deal on that. I'd like to just...
Oh, there's seven.
Yeah.
Couples.
Yeah. Well, why, why do I have to do the math?
So it's 27, I think, for an...
Okay. Um, but it's, it's, it's certainly a positive picture. I notice we lost some people this year that been around for a long time, so that's...
I think every year we deal with that. We're, we're going to lose, you know, 20 or so every year. Um, this year, we didn't lose as many, but, you know, we're, we're still also not all the way through the year. Um, the, uh, the January coming into the new year, we do have our three-month membership, which we are seeing a, a lot of people come in and take advantage of for January, February, March. And, uh, currently, we've actually joined 11 people in the first, you know, uh, eight days of the, of the month, uh, as a three-month member.
So the, the, the alternatives that you put forward earlier, paying off and seasonal and so forth, it's...
The seasonal's paying off very well, and I feel like that those people that are taking the seasonals of three months, those are people that are renting currently, uh, and that some of them have purchased homes, but mo, most of them are renting, you know, for, for the season as they come down. I feel like that in the future, that those people, uh, when they fully retire, or when they fully move down to, uh, to Sebring and Sun and Lake, those are going to be full members for us in the future.
I, I guess what I'm saying, it appears that that's a very successful option that we put into place.
Yes, sir. I feel like it, it's been very successful.
Okay, you've got an, uh, item number five in your report, earnings before interest. Uh, we've got quite a deficit there, 140,000 year-to-date net income.
That was, that's the year-to-date budget. The year-to-date budget was 140,000 deficit. However, our actuals through November is a negative 64,000. So we're actually 70, almost 80,000 ahead of what we had planned on.
I just see a lot of red ink here.
Red, red does mean is not good, so...
I really don't want to go through and spend three hours with the numbers, so, um, I, I guess the overall question would be, are you, are you pleased with the way this season is unfolding?
Uh, so far, I am very pleased with, uh, with how we've gone these first three months of the season. Um, with, with good weather and, um, uh, you know, continued great golfing conditions, um, we're looking to have a very good 2015, uh, better than 2014.
Does our restaurant continue to improve the bottom line?
Our restaurant is, is very successful. Um, we, you know, we're ahead of last year by, you know, 50 or 60,000 currently. Um, so, you know, we're looking at, uh, beating our last year number of almost 1.1 million dollars in revenue. We're probably going to beat that by 100,000 for the year, as long as everything stays, you know, going like it is.
Do you see any benefit from those summer memberships that you were, were doing this year?
Uh, the summer membership that we did was, you know, we only got about five or six of those, I want to say, last year, so I don't think it was very successful for 2014. We are going to try it again in 2015, just to see if maybe the word got out from those five or six people. Maybe they bring friends this year. Um, we'll give it a try one more year after that. If we get the same people or less, it's probably not, uh, it probably didn't work out. So, but you always got to try something. You got to keep trying something to, to continue to, to bring people in the door.
Well, no, that's, that's exactly what you should be doing, so that, that part is good. Back to page one, um, you've got a actual versus prior year on member rounds, deficit of 1096. Then you got a note, we failed to ring in the member rounds for the member X4, as well as the welcome back tournament.
We, we, during those tournaments, usually what happens is behind the counter, we will ring in those member rounds for the tournament. Um, however, uh, it was something that was overlooked by the staff, and, uh, we addressed that in our December numbers. Uh, you'll notice that our December numbers, the member rounds are going to go up, so...
I was just curious. You, you took the time to make the note, but you didn't change the numbers.
I couldn't change them in November. I couldn't go back and do that after the fact, so I have to, I had to do it in December.
Why not? Everybody else does around here. That's okay. But all in all, I, I think a pretty good start to the, uh, the new season, so...
I think the, the biggest update I had was the membership, which you, you know, you asked the question about, but I was going to let Dave talk a little bit about the golf courses. I think they're in great shape right now. We've heard a lot of good comments from, from the members, but, uh, I think he was going to talk a little bit about the overseeding and what we're doing on Turtle, and how, how he feels that's going right now, so...
Okay. Very good.
David Bell, golf course superintendent. Uh, just like Dave said, uh, the main thing that I wanted to touch on was, uh, the non-overseeding that we did on Turtle this year, since that's the first time we've done that. It's kind of a new step for us. Uh, it's, it's proven to be, uh, very cost savings. Uh, I think from a play standpoint, it's been, uh, fairly well-received. I don't think we've seen much negative feedback from it. Uh, from my standpoint, uh, it's, it's going to be great. We're, uh, this coming spring, going through transition, I think you are going to see a tremendous, uh, difference in the condition of Turtle Run this summer. Uh, that's going to be a huge benefit. Uh, one thing that, uh, we are dealing with right now, uh, this time of the year, uh, we have, do have high disease pressure. Uh, we have had some disease, uh, pressure in some of our fairways and some of our roughs. We've done some spot spraying, uh, with the fungicide. I'm actually going to do a bulk application, uh, this upcoming week with that pigment that we've been spraying about every three weeks. Uh, there'll be a fungicide in with it. Uh, leaf spot is the disease that we've been dealing with. That's always the disease that, the primary disease that we deal with, uh... the primary disease that we deal with, uh, in this area. Uh, but overall, uh, I think it's gone very well. Uh, I haven't heard a lot of negative feedback, we meet with the golf committee, uh, once a month, uh, every, every meeting I ask, uh, if they're hearing any kind of feedback on, on the non-overseed, and, uh, it's, it's, it seems to be pretty, pretty well received, uh, from what I'm hearing.
Does the maintenance shared project meet your needs?
Uh, well, well, yes. I mean, it's, yes, I mean, it's, it's, whenever Gator, Greg and I have all met and, and was putting that stuff together, you know, we tried to do it with what we had to work with, and, uh, with what we had to work with, I think we met that. Uh, now, if we could have a blank sheet and, and do it the way that, uh, we're going to come back, uh, obviously, yes, that would be, that would be very, very nice.
Well, you've got a lot of equipment, uh, concerns to take care of, uh-
Absolutely.
You'll have enough space and so forth for that, your office and operations repairs and so forth?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, but then I'd also like to talk, you know, we had this, uh, swingthought.com tour here this last week, uh, the players were very well receptive to the conditions of the golf course and the greens, uh, and we're, we're getting ready for the PGA Latin American Tour qualifier, uh, this upcoming week, uh, in two, or ten days, uh, so we're getting ready for that, and, and it's been a, it's been a good year, it's been a good year weather-wise. Uh, we've had, the spot yesterday was pretty cold, uh, and we've had a few small cold steps, uh, where we've lost a little bit of color, but, uh, but with the weather we've had, we've, we've bounced back pretty well.
I got some questions for you. Um, as I understand it, you're using some temporary help from the district, uh, for the golf course, is that correct?
We have, uh, I have one employee that, uh, is, uh, that I'm using through Labor Finders. Uh, Labor Finders, uh, the, the bill is paid through the district, and then they bill us on our, on our monthly bill for it.
Is this an employee that you want to put on your staff, or?
He's, he's actually, he's worked out pretty well, uh, I mean, that's always, uh, that's always a thought, that, uh, you know, whenever we do look for help, uh, you know, we try to find the best people. Uh, I've used Labor Finders to find many of my staff in the past, where, uh, you know, we kind of have that ability to let them work for us, to get a fill if they are going to work out before we do bring them on full-time.
Okay. I know a couple of us had called David Ford about the, the big drop-off over on number four in front of the restroom, and while you were gone, they filled that with sand, is that going to be filled with a chat or limestone or something?
Correct, we're actually, uh, that material was delivered yesterday, uh, uh, it's a kind of a crush-and-run material, it's a shell material that we're actually going to prep out and kind of make it more of a, more of a parking area, like we've done in some of the other areas with the lime rock. Uh, we've used a lot of that lime rock in some of those areas and around some of the trees, uh, but I have mentioned about, uh, the expense of it, and I've been wanting to try to get another aggregate to try to, uh, to try to use, uh, to see if we could, uh, have a better cost-effective material so we could do other areas, and that, this is going to be the first area I do that at.
Okay. As long as it compacts good like, like that does, well, I wouldn't have a problem with-
It's, it's a, it's a, it's a real fine shell material, uh, it'll, it looks kind of grayish whenever we put it out, whenever it's wet, but over time it'll bleach out, and, uh, it turns pretty white, and then as a cart traffic drives on it, it'll bust the shells up and it'll eventually be more of a, uh, yeah.
Okay, I've got one more point I want to bring up. You and I have talked a couple, three times about an incentive program for your help, and to let the, the rest of the people know, we had talked about an incentive of giving an employee time off if he comes up with a, with a good idea or a money-saving thing for the club, for, for Dave's operation, and it would, but it would amount to is, this supervisor of that particular course letting an employee go home fifteen minutes early, thirty minutes early, if it's a very good idea, if it's a super idea, maybe even an hour. Are you any closer to implementing some kind of an incentive program to give the helps, an incentive to look at things on the golf course?
Sure, no, I, I have, I have not had, I have not finalized anything on doing that, uh, but, uh, but I'll, you know, consider that, and, uh, and then we'll, uh, whenever we do finalize and put something in place, I'll, I'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
Dave, who, who checks the greens in the morning?
Uh, my, my staff, Robin Griffin on, on Deer Run is responsible for that, and Justin Toy on Turtle Run.
Well, I played, um, number five for the first hole the other day, and I, and I think it was on, uh, I think we played deer, maybe it was turtle, I don't remember, but the fir- very first hole, and there must have been a hole this big of grass going. So evidently whoever is checking those greens in the morning isn't looking at them very good, because somebody should have been out there and had that patched.
Okay.
Dave, what's the, uh, plan for cleaning up the debris yard? Somebody throws a lit cigar in there one of these days, you don't have to worry about your buildings you got over there because-
Uh, yes, uh, the, with all the clearing that's been done on Turtle, uh, our debris yard is pretty full, uh, it's about at max capacity. Uh, the last time we had that mulched, uh, we piggybacked off the county, a lot of the mulching that they have done out at their, uh, dump site, uh, I'm in the process of having them come back out. Uh, the mulcher area, the only, the only problem is whenever they bring in those big mulchers, uh, there's, there's a restricted area that, that people have to stay away, uh, from, and then that first hole, every time we've had that pile mulched, we've always coincided it with a course closure, either when we're airfining or, or curfuing or something. Uh, this time of the year, uh, uh, we don't have any of those course closures currently scheduled, uh, so trying to find a date where we can have them come in and have it mulched and meet all the criteria is, is kind of what we're working around right now.
It's unsightly, I know, for one thing, and another thing, it's got, it's got to be a fire hazard.
Sure, sure, uh, and another thing that, you know, with the, with the maintenance yard, uh, uh, project, we would probably address the unsightliness of it, either with a higher fence, you know, some of the landscaping that's going to be having to be put in to try to, to try to mask a lot of that.
We're also looking at going to roll-offs in there. Uh, if you look at the site, we're actually encroaching on property we don't own with the debris pile, and we know when we clean it up, we're going to have to deal with that.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Um, I don't, Tenille has a report this morning, but I'd like to, like to compliment you on the increased communication we're getting between the, uh, the district and the residents, particularly in the area of the, um, uh, landowners meeting that's coming up, uh, I think it's a, a really a good trend, and, uh, I like what you're doing in that area. So I think we're informing our people a lot better than we had before, so I thank you for that. Mike?
A couple things, uh, mentioned earlier in communication with the board, we now own a house over on Capri Street, it's one for failure to, to pay assessments, and there's also about thirty-five hundred bucks in code enforcement liens. Uh, we foreclosed on it and we own it, and my recommendation is we put it up for sealed bid. Uh, unless the board objects, that's kind of the route I would take.
Well, I kind of object because of your statement saying that's, it's all you expect to get out of it is, uh-
Well, we've, we've been in the house, we've looked at it, it's in poor condition, and we don't expect to receive a lot of money for it. It's a house that is in pristine condition.
Eight thousand, we used to sell lots around here for more than eight thousand.
Well, in this particular case, when you look at it and you look at what it's going to take to renovate it, and when you get through with it, you're probably going to have a house worth between forty and fifty grand, uh, and the cost you'll have to put into it, I, I'm not optimistic about bidding it, but we'll put it out to bid and see what we get.
Well, sealed bid, does that mean we have to accept whatever comes in?
No, sir, but, uh, we figured that'd be the best way to do it. And we'll see who's interested in it.
How would you advertise that, Mike?
Through the newspapers and, um, locally, I don't think you'd get anybody come out of town interested in it, I wouldn't advertise it beyond locally. There, there's some, there's some investors that follow these type things that may come in and try to buy it, and I know we've had some, some internal discussions with some folks that may be interested in acquiring it.
Uh, I'd like to see us get, you know, more than that, than out of eighty-three hundred.
I, I don't want to build up your spirits that you're going to get twenty or thirty thousand dollars for it, if you go look at it, you'll see what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Uh, secondly, we've got an experiment going on tomorrow, which is our community-wide garage sale, uh, it's been much more successful than we anticipated. Uh, when we originally came up with the idea, we thought, nah, thirty people maybe, or we push it to Neil, eighty?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight? So that's going to be interesting, and, uh, we'll report to you how that works out. Uh, it's, uh, it's just interesting, I'll just let it go at that.
Is there a fee, is there a fee for this?
Yeah, five bucks.
Five bucks?
For the permit.
With eighty people, so we're clearing four hundred dollars for chaos.
That was, that was the permit fee for the county, it's already in the county.
It's more of a, a benefit to see if we can't, it's just an experiment, let's put it to you that way.
Get people here.
Okay.
And last but not least, excuse me, I'm still, got residual from it, flu. The new residents meeting's going to be on the twenty-seventh at six, I think y'all have all received an invitation electronically, uh, we'd encourage you to come. That's all I have, Mr. Miller.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Yeah, I got one, um, at the last meeting, my, we talked about code violations and how parking is one of the biggest problems, and Mike Hurley was going to look at the situation offer, some suggestions today.
I'm sorry, that escaped me, I'll have to follow up on that.
So maybe the next meeting we can talk about it?
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Hurley about it. I'm sorry, I, I was not at the last meeting.
Yeah, and John was going to look into the whole issue of estate sales, so maybe that's, uh, unless you have something else, Mike, we can-
No.
Move on to John.
Okay. Let's start with our foreclosure reports, do you have any questions regarding that? There, there are a couple new cases on there, but basic foreclosure stuff. Uh, the other thing is our litigation report, and the litigation report, uh, two key points here, one is, um, the deposition of Mr. Severino, which I anticipate will be very interesting, and, and potentially outcome determinative of settlements or where we go from here. But, uh, he is going to be deposed in, uh, wherever he's incarcerated on January twenty-seventh.
Somewhere around Lake Butler.
Uh, it's up somewhere around there, yeah. Uh, and so, uh, that's out there. Uh, you might also recall that a motion for summer judgment has been filed by Mr. Gonzalez to eliminate all of the, uh, plaintiffs that cannot, uh, establish any liaison with the district, you know, so how can they say they relied on district representations if they never contacted the district? And there are only six that have, so, so he's trying to get everybody else thrown out, at least as relates to the district. As relates to Mr. Severino, Mr. Diggert, that's separate, but get us out of any potential liability to them, uh, if they didn't contact the district with this allegation of reliance on district representations. Uh, and that, that motion for summer judgment is scheduled for February twenty-third, uh, at one-thirty, as reflected in the report that you have. Uh, you might also recall that the insurance company, um, offered settlement of twenty-seven thousand five hundred for the plaintiffs that, that had actually put money out of pocket to Mr. Severino that did contact the district. So we're offering, they offered to reimburse for everything that these plaintiffs were out of pocket, just as a matter of convenience and settlement, not as a matter of any wrongdoing on the part of the district, just, uh, twenty-seven thousand five hundred based on all the lawyer's fees as it mount up, is a pretty good deal for them, and they're, they're in the minimizing loss game as opposed to doing what's absolutely right and, uh, that sort of thing, so, um, I, I, there has been no response to that settlement offer. Uh, they did reach out again to the plaintiff's attorney to say, look, this was on the table, you haven't responded, what are you looking for? Uh, again, loss management, in my opinion, uh, on behalf of the insurance company. I do not believe that they're going to get much out of that until Sev- Mr. Severino is deposed, and, and they get some idea how, how that cashes through.
I'm getting a little nervous about this, I mean, now you, you throw in a figure of a hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-eight, uh, first time I've seen that, um-
Let me address that, sir, if I may. The, the twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollar figure is what these people actually paid out of pocket to Mr. Severino. So the insurance company says, well, the most money you could possibly have lost on this is the money you, you paid to him. You know, you still owed the money on the bonds, you still do. I put this number in there only because plaintiff's attorney's saying, we want payment for all of these bonds, we want to get them cleared out, not just what our people have paid out. So, so there was, there was some question regarding how much that money was, and, and that's why I put that in here, just so you know.
But that's the only, the six that contacted-
That's only the six that have contacted the district, and that is the entire amount of the bond that they would owe, as opposed to what they've actually paid and lost, so.
The other thing that I, I just don't understand this, and, uh, national recreational properties still are in business, aren't they?
Sir, I have no idea.
Well, they must be. They can't serve them-
I don't know if they are in business under that name.
I, I can't-
I just, I fail to-
They've sent process servers out to the building, they've, apparently, I mean, based on the, the pleadings they filed with the judge, which I read, uh, they, they have made numerous efforts to serve national recreational properties in California unsuccessfully.
That's incredible. Do they, do, do they own anything here in Sun and Lake anymore?
Yeah, yeah, everything changed.
Isn't Everything Changes, uh, subsitter, or hanging, a limb hanging on that tree?
I think that's a different corporation.
It is wholly different.
Different corporation, but it's them, it's the same.
I, I would not say they're unrelated, I, I don't think so.
They can't be trying very hard.
Well, you couldn't serve Everything Changes and, and, and get service on national recreational properties, that, that wouldn't work. You have to actually serve the, the people, and I believe, I, I'd have to look this up, but I, I thought that, um, what was the guy's name, uh, Greg some Spiro, Greg Spiro?
Spiro.
Who, who, I thought that was his company, It's Everything Changes, as opposed to national recreational property, and those guys were, were those two robbed somebody and another guy that-
First to the nail.
Yeah, that, that owned the, that owned the, uh, national recreational-
That's the name.
Yeah, I'm surprised any of us forgotten names at this point.
Incredible shell game.
Yes, so.
They might, we might wait for them to show up here, because I think they're going to show up here again one of these days.
I'd love to see that.
For what it's worth, I just-
Actually, I think in the next few months, they're going to lose almost all the property they own.
No matter, yeah.
Yeah, they've already lost probably, uh, two hundred lots, uh, in the past sixty days, and I expect them to start losing about a hundred, fifty to a hundred every month that's going to be going off, off our books.
Couldn't happen to a nicer bunch of guys.
So.
John, anything else?
That's all I have right now, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, unfinished business, I don't think we have any new business, committee reports, public comments.
You're up.
Yes, you may, yes, you may, you've been very patient.
It's been an interesting experience, I'm not familiar with the vocabulary and the labels of things, and I obviously have an awful lot to learn. Um, to simplify things, uh, I'm Linda Ritchie, I'm a joint owner of property on Ponce de Leon. Uh, this is the first time I've actually been down here to stay here for, uh, what I believe all of you refer to as the season. Um, I've made periodic weekly visits, but not anything of any length because I was working and I'm now retired. In doing that, I've been trying to utilize the swimming- was working and I'm now retired. In doing that, I've been trying to utilize the swimming pool and the recreation center and the exercise and the aerobics, water aerobics. The explanations that I have been given have been that it's a daily fee every time you want to go, and I'm going three dollars a day times five days a week is... Gee whiz, you know? For three months, that's a hundred and eighty dollars just to go swimming. I heard the gentleman from the golf course referring to something as seasonal memberships or something of that nature. So to...
You're a property owner, is that correct?
Yes, a joint property owner, yes. And I realize I can have the forty-dollar-a-year membership kind of thing. So in dealing and chatting with people over there, also when you have people come down to visit you for two weeks, three weeks, anyway, to cut it short, I would suggest that someone give some thought to simplify things, doing something like the golf course did in having a seasonal membership for the people who want to utilize the swimming pool and the water aerobics and things of that nature, just like they want to use the golf course for a seasonal basis. So I'll thank you for your ear, and it would be nice if that would be...
Interesting point. I'm going to just fly that right over to our community services director and...
Well, it's just an idea.
Well, it's good. We welcome ideas. We welcome ideas.
Is there someone whom I could speak more directly, or I don't know what the proper process is?
Why is she paying a daily fee to begin with?
The gentleman holding his head?
No, the good-looking girl next door.
Yeah. Actually, probably the biggest reason why we haven't gone to seasonal is the fees are so low.
Well, why is she paying a daily fee?
Because she chooses to. She can buy a membership for forty bucks.
For the whole year.
For the whole year. I'm only going to be here for three months.
Well, yeah, but... Eight days you've already gotten...
However, there are people over there who are grandparents, who have their daughter and their son-in-law and their two grandchildren and things of that nature there for two weeks. That's another element that...
Well, we do the same thing here. I have my grandkids come down. I have to pay the daily fee.
Just the...
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
That is the young lady that you need to talk with, right there.
Hi, Larry Bertetto. I only had one comment and changed it to two. In reference to that maintenance area, that I had a thought. Is forty-two-hundred-square-foot building maintenance and all that, is that big enough? And number... Next thing, these pole barns, would we be better off in saving maintenance of equipment by having a whole enclosed barn rather than having a pole barn? If we have to spend the money...
We're going to price it both ways.
Given my druthers, I would build what Avon Park has, which is about a sixteen-to-twenty-thousand-square-foot building. You can see it right there by the college on twenty-seven. That would be the ideal structure.
How much does that cost?
I'll tell you in a week.
Call Julian. Anyway.
Exactly what I'm going to do.
Anyway, the last thing.
We don't have a... It accommodates that, would we?
The last thing. Thank you, President Miller. In regard to several meetings ago, I made the complaint about all that drainage in my yard, and I got back from the cruise, and I found out that that's all been... Looks like it's been taken care of. A drainage thing put in, sod put in. Looks like a pretty good job. Supposedly, one of the neighbors said it was tested, and they put water in there and drained water, so it all drained. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, but thank our public works director too, Greg Griffin.
But yeah, but you were pretty emphatic when you said, "Let's get it done." Thank you.
Thank you for that, Larry.
Tom Costi. I would like to echo Larry's sentiments with regard to the maintenance building. You might recall that approximately six years ago, for several years, we had a capital improvement plan that included at that time and in those days' numbers, included a six-hundred-thousand-dollar maintenance building, new maintenance building.
Four hundred.
It was six hundred. I'm sorry, it was six hundred. I've checked the numbers and projected them, and six-hundred-thousand dollars six years ago would equate to maybe eight or nine-hundred-thousand dollars in today's dollars. When I look at a building that's going to last twenty or twenty-five years, I don't consider the whole cost, just what we're going to spend this year. We spread it. Keep in mind, that is an enterprise. Our water operations and our golf course operations are enterprise-related, and most businesses would spread that cost in the form of depreciation over twenty-five years. So we're only talking, even if it's a hundred... Even if it's a million bucks, we're going to be talking a cost of a hundred thousand dollars a year, actually ten thousand dollars a year, something in that neighborhood. So what I'm proposing is, yeah, if we're going to look at a building that's going to be around here for the next twenty-five years, we need to think in terms of what our needs are going to grow to over the next twenty-five years, not just what we're looking at today. So personally, I wouldn't object to going out to do the thing right, do it as though you were just starting from scratch and that we had all the money in the world to do it, which we should have. We do have reserves that would cover that kind of an investment.
I think that was thrust of our comments, and there was one comment relating to expansion. I'm not sure of that.
Well, it brings up my other... My second point is, the district owns over two hundred lots right adjacent to the northwest corner of Deer Run with direct access almost to the golf course. And I believe that that area is at a higher elevation than the area that we're considering here. So a couple hundred lots there. The district owns probably twice that many lots out Shoemaker... Schumacher Road, south of Granada, between Granada and Schumacher, and west of Cortez. I realize that doesn't have the access to the golf course that the other property does, but didn't we decide to give that two hundred acres in the northwest corner of Deer Run to the Scrub Jays, but then ultimately decided not to do it? Do we still own those lots?
We do.
Was that area given any kind of a consideration for a new maintenance facility?
No, sir.
Would it make sense to look at it? We don't have much invested. There are no bonds.
I don't think we could get it rezoned appropriately.
We couldn't get it rezoned appropriate for a maintenance building?
Correct. I don't believe we could. Not surrounded by residents.
Might be worth asking the question because it might be a whole lot easier to handle in terms of drainage. It might even solve some of those property drainage issues along Columbus Boulevard that are out there.
Also have to bring in water and sewer, and I think you'd have a lot of other development costs if you could get past the zoning issue. I think your zoning issue and land use change would be very problematic.
Keep in mind, we're talking twenty-five years. Thank you very much.
My name is John Nelson. I'm the vice president of the Homewards Association over Tanglewood. President Miller and I have worked on an issue that has yet to be resolved with the Dollar General over here. I wanted to enlighten you on some issues I run into. We have a very dangerous situation there with people exiting out of the Dollar General through a do-not-enter into a one-way. It's not so much of a problem if they turn to go toward the Tanglewood Gate, but when they turn toward Highway twenty-seven, they meet people coming in head-on off of twenty-seven. I've been involved in one near-miss. I've had people at the Homewards meetings come up to me, several of them just recently. I've had the sheriff, Deputy Sheriff Schrader, sit out there. He said this is an extremely dangerous situation. He went to the county. They didn't want to do anything. Ramon Gavert basically told me, "Somebody had to get killed before we do anything about it." Not acceptable to me. Dick and I went down and looked at it, and we come up with some ideas, and you put it to your committee. They then submitted it to Ramon Gavert. I talked to Ramon a week ago, and pardon my expression, he's a smart ass. The answer I got from him was, "Well, yeah, okay. Well, tell the police department to fix it. It's not their job. It's the county's job to fix it. They zoned it. They gave the building permits. They need to correct this problem before we have an accident over there."
Well, John, I was told by our people that that was moving forward and that they were having a... Excuse me? They were having a problem with Dollar General, trying to get them to come on board, and that's the last I heard of it. So this is new information. Mike?
Ramon just kind of took this attitude that it's not important to me. He couldn't care less. It's kind of... And I'm going down to talk to Don Elwell Monday about it, too.
That's unacceptable, Mike.
Conversation I had with Mr. Gaverey on Wednesday morning was, they had tentatively reached agreement with the Dollar Store to close the eastern entrance to Tanglewood Drive.
Is there any redesign of anything out there?
Closing the entrance.
Closing it completely?
There will be one entrance and not... They're going to close the eastern entrance and only have the western entrance onto Tanglewood.
So they're going to close that one?
That's the tentative agreement.
Great. How soon?
I do not have that information, but I'll try to find out.
Okay, okay. Because people coming out of twenty-seven, and myself being one included, if there's nobody coming north or south on twenty-seven, I exit into that area fifteen, twenty miles an hour because I'm just following the flow of traffic. And when someone turns out, too late to stop. I mean, it's very critical. Now, I have one other, a couple other little issues. The maintenance guy, for one thing, there's a dirt trail going from Tanglewood Drive down to the Heartland Bank, and you guys have got three water valves on that section. I believe they're yours.
If they were to throw water, they would likely be ours.
Okay. One of them, God knows what happened. The whole cap, the cast iron cap and the cover have disappeared. They're gone, and that whole pipe is filling up with dirt to the point where if you ever had to, there's no way you're going to get down there and turn the valve off. You might just want to look into it.
Who owns... You know, I saw that. I saw that. I saw that trail time and again. Who owns that property where that trail is?
We do.
Well, how do they got... Why do they got access road going over to Heartland Bank? They shouldn't even be... They shouldn't even be using that.
We did it as a convenience to the Tanglewood Park.
Lock it off. Then they won't have to worry about messing up a valve.
I'm not worried about the trail. I'm worried about your water main. If you have a broken line, you're not going to be able to get to the valve. You have to be able to shut the valve off if the thing breaks. The other thing, I just gave a couple pictures there. Coming out of the Schumacher entrance on Tanglewood, they've increased that speed limit on Schumacher, as you know, to forty-five miles an hour. Tanglewood Maintenance mows the median in that area and the side of the road as basically as a courtesy thing, but there is a large amount of brush that's building out and building out toward the street. And when you're parked at the stop sign at Tanglewood waiting for traffic, you can't see anybody coming until they're about two hundred feet away. And if you start to pull out ahead of that, two hundred feet can be covered in less than a couple of seconds with a car going forty-five, most often in that area about fifty. And all I'd like to know is, who's responsible for trimming that brush?
Well, it's county right of way, isn't it?
Is that Schumacher? Is that the county?
Yes.
County right of way.
Huh?
County right of way.
That is county property. That's what I did not know. So I'm going to talk to Mr. Elwell about that then. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for coming by, Jack.
Bill, knock across the residence.
Your phone off?
I'm sorry?
Is your phone off?
Yes, it was on vibrate. I'm sorry. I never receive phone calls. Anyhow, the maintenance area is an area which definitely has to be looked at. I've been over there with the potholes, the water, and the really tough situation that Dave Bell has to work in in that trailer. It is really not conducive to a healthy atmosphere. I'm very surprised that you're talking about doing over that area and the exhausted of a lot of thoughts. And Rick here just come up with an idea, why don't we just get those two lots and expand it and go a different direction would be better for the drainage. I'm surprised that that has been brought up.
Well, one thing, if I could address it, the district at one point owned that entire buffer down Columbus and down Woods and Irons. When the land sale was done, N R P I, all those lots were sold. It would be my preference to own all of those lots because we would expand the yard in its entirety. We do own several of them. I think we're short about five or six, but, you know, that would be the ideal situation. Unfortunately, they were sold.
The other issue is, you would have to rezone it as well.
Right.
Because those are residentially zoned. You can do certain things in residential zones that's adjacent to the type of zoning that we have for the maintenance area, but to do other things like expand the yard beyond drainage and entrance roads, then you've got to go through the rezoning process.
I understand. It must be a process, but you'd use probably half of that lot because you want to have some kind of buffer anyhow.
We looked at all that.
Okay, fine. Larry had an idea of the workers that he was talking with Dave Bell about, about time off. Instead of time off, maybe they should initiate a suggestion award, a suggestion award program, give them a dinner for two, something like that. Would that be acceptable?
Yeah.
Because we really need the workers out there. Congratulations on Sunlake for having thirty-four new members. Do credit to the condition of the course and the fine work by Dave Ford. One suggestion, you have Hornick that's building several homes. Now, I think they tried this before. Is try to sweeten the purchase of a new home by including a membership for a year, free, discounted, anything to attract more people and the housing environment because if you built five or six new homes every year, it's a lot of money. Oh, I'm going to bring up a suggestion in our golf committee meeting Tuesday, is that one of the members, several of the members that I have on the driving range, would like to have it lined so it would be not peril parking, but lined so that you can accommodate more golf carts, and it'd be functional, it'd be orderly, and it will look good. And I think we've gone around that a couple of times. So if the purse strings are okay for painting some lines, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
We welcome that. Thank you, Bill.
Good morning again. I don't know whose house we're going to for lunch. They haven't announced it yet, and that's the reason I'm sticking around. I'm sure John...
You're buying, Rex.
Yes. A couple of questions, of course. Number one, the delay in the E M and the sheriff's department and the ambulance folks and all, was in the paper a few days ago. It was a delay. Is that going to delay your efforts?
No, I responded to that with communication with Commissioner Ritchie and got an interesting response from that, and I also heard from Jim Brooks. Basically, I was concerned about the language of those comments, and I was assured that everybody's on board at the county level and things are moving forward, and we are going to have our facility. Mike, you might want to add anything to that, but you got a very, very strong response back that the county's not abandoning...
I think the study has more to do with the issues related to volunteer fire departments, possibly special taxing districts for funding, and non-emergency transport as much as anything. I don't see the county getting out of the EMS business.
In other words, I was assured by the commissioner that things are going ahead and has full support. So there we are.
They track calls. They know station locations. I think that's a very minor part of the study.
That's fine. Time will tell.
Not minor to us.
My next comment about the entrance to Tanglewood off of Highway twenty-seven, did I hear somebody say that a portion of that or all of it, someone said, "Should or would be closed"?
No.
Where is the entrance that they were talking?
No, just the east entrance out of the Dollar Store.
South. The parking lot is.
The parking lot entrance.
In other words, you couldn't go around the store like you do now?
You have to go...
No.
It forces you. It forces you to go around the store.
Forces you to go around the store and then go so that you can go... Forces you to go around the store and then go, so that you can go out.
Well, thank you, but let me say this, uh, before we get around to messing with the Tanglewood Drive, we need to find who owns that, or if there is a reverter clause in it, and, uh, I believe there's a reverter clause, and it doesn't revert to the district. It, uh, and has.
The access in and out of Tanglewood is not being affected by that closure. Closure's the parking lot.
Right.
So, we don't, we don't have a dog in that place.
That's an important, uh, access, and those people, um.
Clarification is that there's a berm in Tanglewood Drive that has one way going south and one way coming in to Tanglewood Drive off of twenty-seven. On that one way coming in off Highway twenty-seven, there is an entrance that goes one hundred dollars into the parking lot. That is, we cannot, we're not supposed to exit on that.
Jack, Mike.
Because it's a do-not-enter.
Jack, and Jack, excuse me, you can probably talk with, uh, Rex after the meeting and explain that further.
Play it to him after the meeting.
We're, we're still.
One other, one other comment, uh, that, uh, as I understand it from the beginning, is not a driveway or roadway going up by the sewer treatment plant. That was set aside as a buffer zone, supposed to be trees planted on it and so forth to buffer, uh, the two communities. So, it's being, if it's being used for a roadway, you'd need to look into the fact that, uh, see if it's still set aside as a buffer zone.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else, public comment? Okay, bring it back to the board. Any board comments? I have one major comment, and that is concerning the fact that, um, Mike, Michael Wright will not be continuing with us past, uh, October this, of this year, and Mike is, by his decision, is moving on, so we need to start to address the issue of replacing Mike. And, uh, it may seem a little bit early to you folks, but, uh, the way things work around here in the public sector, we can't start too soon, so, um, John, this is, this is a, I don't consider this particularly a public process while we're in the formative stages, how do we, we work that? We need to decide where we're going to advertise, how we're going to advertise, we need to make decisions regarding salary offers, contract amendment, because I have issues with the present contract, I have issues with the amount that we have been paying in the past eight years. This board needs to have a, a full say in the whole process, and I'm talking about each member of the board, and how do we address that in terms of, uh, decision-making?
I think first you need to address how, how you wish to find the candidate. Uh, in the past, uh, for, for lack of a better term, headhunter groups have been employed. Uh, there, uh, in, in Mr. Wright's case, he was identified as someone local in the community, uh, and, and in the past, uh, you know, different people have, have risen to the position that, uh, the board felt comfortable with them being general manager. So, how you do that depends on where you're at right now in terms of, do you have someone in mind, and if you do, you could approach.
Now, it's going to be an op, it's going to be an open, uh, search, and, and that will, by open, I mean that's internal and external as well. Um, my concern is not how we go about it, but how we, we take step by step this board in terms of the sunshine situation.
Well, it's, it's all sunshine as far as I'm concerned. Uh, you might, uh, I, I'll give you an example. Uh, you might meet with me, and we would work out the contract to what you deem to be appropriate, but the, it has to come back to the board for the board to all review that and, and make the ultimate decision.
Well, that, that's what I'm, I'm stating, that needs to be done, so.
I understand.
So, we need one person to start the ball, and then bring it to the board, right?
I think that's a very acceptable way to do it.
Okay, is that okay with you guys?
It's fine.
Um, I'll put something together, if that's okay?
Fine.
For your review?
You're going to get nominated anyway, so you might as well just do it.
Is that goatee giving you added oomph?
Yeah.
Okay.
New macho.
Okay, do we have, uh, any other comments from the board?
No, no.
Okay, meeting's over.